Yeah.
Yes. Yep. Who can trust, of course, mom got sick, we had to go to the hospital, she was fine.
Oh, that's.
All right, we're ready to begin. Today is January third, twenty twenty-two, and let's stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, first item is public comments. Public comments? Okay, no public comments. Moving on to announcements and community calendar. Um, I'll do this over here so I can see.
I did give you, Madam Chair, a blank, uh, so you didn't have to look up your table of contents or your agenda. Just wondering.
Yes.
Okay.
I'm just, I can make it bigger. All right, so, um, the first item is the town hall will be closed on January seventeenth in observance of the Civil Rights Day. Also, the transfer station will be closed on Monday, January seventeenth. Details can be found on the website. Any other items? No?
No more.
So, moving on to new business, appointment of a temporary building inspector, Jamie Samborn.
Uh, yes, Madam Chair, every, uh, winter, Ryan, uh, heads off for a couple of weeks. Um, due with the family, uh, he's requested that we reappoint, uh, Jamie Samborn for the interim building inspector while he's out of the office. I believe his day out is like the twenty-second or twenty-third. Uh, Jamie, uh, he's discussed it with Jamie, and Jamie's willing to do it again this year. Apparently did it last year. Jamie's a licensed plumber, so he does bring a skill set for the job.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to, uh, appoint, uh, Jamie Samborn, uh, for a temporary, uh, building inspector, uh, while, um, our.
Uh, if, if I could just maybe point out to you, the motion that I drafted is, uh, for all days and times that Mr. Boyer is not able to fill the position here in twenty twenty-two, that way, if for some unforeseen reason he takes another mini-vacation, or has a particular week or days he can't fulfill the office, uh, this motion covers it.
Motion, so said.
Set it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so next item is review of the capital improvements report and determination of which items to put forward to the warrant.
Again, I did, uh, reprint, Madam Chair, the, um, spreadsheet, uh, provided by the capital improvements committee. Also, the, their whole package was sent, uh, electronic. Um, the upper, um, spread portion of that spreadsheet that you're looking at has basically all of the items, like we, you can see there, uh, from the police fire and school. Um, the second half of that spreadsheet is those same items, but all, but ranked in order. So, um, what they did is they had all the members literally rate, um, Tony being one, Bud, Ewone, Doug, Peter, Gordy, um, as to what they, um, felt, uh, how, how they felt those things fell out, if you will, uh, from a order of priority. And so, um, so for instance, public safety, communications, radio replacement, uh, to create a possible CIP Capital Reserve Fund. It came in the highest with an average of fifty-five points. It is an item of thirty thousand dollars. And then it continues to go down through. So, I leave it to the, uh, I don't have any particular recommendations, one way or the other. Um, I see this one as, um, well, it's, it's multifaceted in that, uh, to make a decision on which items to move on the CIP, one also needs to see, uh, or question how these things are going to get funded, and then, um, in other words, what's our, uh, ability to fund these particular things? Fund them out.
Question. Police cruisers. I know we talked about this. Um, car three, four, five. Um, doesn't, doesn't the chief put this in his budget? To pay for the, pay for these cars anyways? I don't understand why, why, why is this going into?
Yeah, so, but, no, go ahead. No, go ahead.
I think it's, it's a first-year advancement, so that, uh, funding of the potential request. But I go, I'm just relying on the note, it says to the right side, no additional tax levy money. It's in the police department general fund.
Yeah, so, so generally, the way I, I always understood it was, anything over ten thousand dollars is supposed to be considered a capital project, and is supposed to be put forth on this, right here. Is how I always understood it.
So, does it need to be included in the total CIP?
Uh, I wouldn't.
I had.
But he budgets.
Think so, but I'm not.
Including the CIP, but it's funded, right.
I should have asked him. I mean, he budgets for this.
That was my understanding, is that it wouldn't be part of that total of the CIP that we would, um, recommend.
So, this is not part of the total?
That's my understanding, I mean, I know it's a little confusing, but my understanding was that it wasn't, you know, even though it's in there and it's in, and it's ranked, but as noted, that it's in the police general fund budget.
Now, what about the ambulance? Is that on here because it's over ten thousand dollars and it's a capital project, or?
He's looking to receive that to get an ambulance within two years, I think it is. To add to, uh, it's half, I believe.
Uh, to the answer your question, Salkin-Moral, is both. One, it's over ten thousand, but secondly, um, there would be a partial appropriation asked for from the voters, but there would also be a, uh, transfer of monies from the Capital Reserve Fund established for the ambulance to pay for. So, part of it he has, part of it comes out of the fund, and I think the balance is here.
I thought the ambulance was supposed to be a hundred percent self-funding.
I think that was part back. I was, this goes way back, so. Uh, as a selectman, um, I know when we first had the warrant article, that's what, what was its intent. Uh, the last time it was revised, it does say, um, to, you know, support the ambulance and keep it, in the words, in service. And it's been interpreted by the department heads that the in-service part meant also the labor. And so, uh, when there's been a shortfall for ambulance, for s- labor, to staff the ambulance, it's been withdrawn out of that Capital Reserve Fund. And this has been going on for a number of years.
But isn't that what his payroll line is for?
That's how I, when I came into this job, that's what I thought. But I'm seeing that not only does he have a payroll line through the, through our general budget, but he's also been relying on the ambulance fund to the tune of about a hundred thousand dollars a year. Uh, he's ill this evening, that's what I wanted to point out to the board. COVID reasons cannot be in the room to defend himself.
I mean, the, the way he explained it to me, too, is, we can have these beautiful ambulances that pay for themselves, that sit at the fire station, that are nice, big, red, shiny vehicles, but he has no one to run them. So, it's kind of a, it's kind of a, you know.
Right, but if there's no one to run it, then where's the money going? To pay the people to run it, because that's the way it was just explained.
It's coming out of this, it's coming out of the revolving fund.
It's coming, been coming out of multiple funds.
Right, but the way that you just said.
So, we can either have one or two things, we can have the staff, or we can have the equipment. That's just the way it was explained to me, you know.
No, I get that.
Right.
But I guess, I guess what I'm trying to figure out is, if we have the staff, why aren't we using the payroll line to pay them?
Because.
Because that's what's there for.
You don't have enough.
Well, then adjustments should be made to, to do it.
Mm-hmm, I agree.
Because how does the budget committee track all that stuff, the payroll, and have a accurate, an accurate number to work with every year if we're pulling money out of another account or another line that isn't the payroll line for that department?
I would concur.
Oh, yeah, definitely.
How old is the, how old's the newest ambulance that we have now?
The newest?
The newest.
Two years old? Two?
How old's the one prior to that?
Ten.
Yeah, and that one's been in and out of the shop from my understanding.
It's, it's.
Is it back in again?
To answer your, backing up one question, going from the summary that the board was provided from the CIP committee, police vehicle lease purchase, and it says in parentheses, paid out of the police general fin- fund budget. So.
Okay.
Answer that question.
Yeah.
So, while it's in here, it's funded by
Okay.
the other one.
So, for, for our purposes, though, when we're calculating how much we want to push forward on the warrant article for the CIP, we don't have to include that amount?
No. Correct.
Just wanted to clarify.
Yep.
Well, in, in my previous years, it doesn't have to be these particular numbers neither.
Oh, true.
You know, it's just, uh, that's just a, a number they, that, but it doesn't have to be any of these, you know. Now, the road construction, um, is three fifty, now that's offset, though, right?
Yeah, if you look down on the bottom, there's a hundred and ninety, if you look down at the very bottom, it's minus highway block grant and other offsets. So, whatever the other offsets are.
So, uh, so close to two, so two hundred, almost two hundred.
Well, no, for the road construction, I think the, I think it's been said in the past, we average, what, a hundred and thirty?
Thirty thousand, yes.
A hundred and thirty for.
One twenty-nine to one thirty-four, yeah.
Yes.
So, three fifty minus, call it one twenty-eight.
Well, then why is the three fifty there, why isn't it just two?
Because we tipped you.
So, that, I, I don't know the answer to that one, but I know it always goes in at the full amount that is being asked for, but then it gets offset by whatever the state gives us.
I know, but how does the taxpayers, that's not good transparency.
Well, how it get, is transparent is, I'll go down to business item three, just read the article. See if the town will both raise and appropriate the sum of, in this case, would be three hundred and fifty thousand, for the purpose of highway and road reconstruction maintenance repairs paving, but anticipated the town will receive funds in the amount of one hundred, this is last year's article, one hundred and twenty-nine thousand, five hundred dollars from the Han, New Hampshire Highway Block Grant. Uh, this is a non-lapsing appropriation. How was it explained to me years ago? Is that you can't use the one twenty-nine, five hundred unless you raise and appropriate the full amount.
Yep.
And thus, it ends it in the budget. You have to use the term, I can't tell how many times the DRA has said this to me, you have to use the words, raise and appropriate the full amount. You can't say, raise and appropriate, in this case, let's say, two hundred, and then say, use the, it, it has to be the full amount for it to be able to go through the budget legally.
And that's why, what, what year was it when nothing passed, twenty nineteen?
Yes.
That's why nothing got done on the roads, because, yeah, we, we got the highway block grant, but it couldn't be used because we didn't get the offset, I guess, of the, the, the tax-based money.
Right.
So, what happens when you, when we do receive that, does that money go back into the general fund?
That would have just gone into the general fund then.
Definitely.
Just wanted to clarify, yep, okay.
So, that, that's why my comment earlier, when I said, this information has to be taken in concert with this information, i.e. the warrant articles, combined with the paperwork that I gave, uh, Select and Moral earlier, that showed that, you know, in, so far, our accounting shows that for twenty twenty-one, we spent, what, eighty-two point five percent?
Yeah.
Leaving approximately nine hundred and eighty thousand that may roll into the unassigned fund balance. I say may, because we still, through the month of January, bills will be trickling in, but things like the county have been paid for, the schools, all the major things have been paid for. That's why there's like three pieces of information that we have to keep in mind at the same time when we're discussing this.
Do we have on here, what, what is in these particular, um, just, just using the, oh, any, any of them?
You don't, but if you want to.
Let's go with the boat ramp.
With five minutes, give me five minutes, I can print it out for you.
Because it would be very important.
I have a separate.
I don't want to, I don't want to create more work for you.
You discuss it, and I'll go print.
But, um, I guess would like to know what's in each of these accounts, you know, today, you know, revenue-wise.
Oh, in total, okay.
In total, yeah, because it kind of.
That, I don't think we, I don't think we have that.
No, that's where he was going to.
Do you remember what the, what we did for CIP last year?
For?
For total?
It wasn't, nowhere near this, I can tell you that.
No, it wasn't, I, I think it was under five hundred, I think it was, it was four and some change, if I remember correctly.
Yeah. I mean.
And I think last year, we only took the top ten projects, too.
Right.
Well, and last year, was it last year that everything failed?
No, it was twenty nineteen.
Was it the year before?
Yeah.
So, this public safety, um, radio replacement. I know, I know he, he's, there's a possible grant. I think, I think that's, this is for all departments, I think that's fairly new, I haven't seen that on the CIP.
So, if we, if we did the top ten projects, just the way it is right now, it's five hundred and sixty-eight thousand, three hundred dollars.
So, the top ten?
Top ten, but then you subtract the thirty-five thousand for the cars, for the police cruisers. Five thirty-three-three. And then subtract roughly a hundred and, oh, a hundred and twenty-nine. Four oh four, three hundred.
On this spreadsheet, gray is supposed to be green, but because I don't have a color option in my printer. Activity, it is what it is. So, to answer your question, Salkin-Ross, the estimated balance is right here.
Okay.
In the first column.
Right.
And you'll see fiscal year twenty-two, what's being requested, what was requested in twenty-one, twenty, and nineteen.
Okay.
And Matt's was corrected by his assertion earlier that, did you want to share that one? That in nineteen, that only five thousand dollars was approved by the voters.
So, there's really not much here, how about, what about like the, the, um, like, I know we have money in, in the, uh, bridges.
That would be.
I know we have money in the boat, the boat ramp.
Bridges is down, what, is the second page.
Second page?
On the back.
Flip, flip your first page over.
Oh, my bad. Okay, I apologize.
Six thousand.
Trying to save paper, yeah, so.
Milton Bridges, so there's two hundred grand in, so we have two different ones, right?
Yeah, so there's Milton Main Bridges, and then there's bridges that are within the town.
Right.
Okay. Yeah.
So, Milton Main Bridges is like, uh, Garage Way.
Yep.
The, all the bridges in the mills.
Which, one of them is in, uh, very, very poor condition.
Oh, yeah.
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 About ready to close it.
Tools, actually.
Yeah.
Right, so if you're looking at that bridge Capital Reserve Fund, the second thing down, or the second full thing down, a hundred and six thousand is roughly what will be in the fund as of December thirty-first, we move the money. Twenty-five is what they're asking for this year. Twenty-five is what got approved, because it's grayish there, in, um, twenty twenty-one. The Milton one, we didn't add anything to last year, it still stands at one, one ninety-one. Now, the, that project has had a cost increase slightly over two hundred thousand, but when asked the question, was there sufficient funds, I look at both accounts and say, yes, there's sufficient funds.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, because I don't think, given the wording of the Bridge Capital Reserve Fund, it excludes using on any other bridge. So, just.
So, it's there if we need it.
Exactly, it's there if we need it.
Like, and the GIS system is thirty-five thousand.
And if you go to, if, if we go back to the fire department, which started this whole question, the new ambulance, so on page one.
Yep.
So, it's estimated that the balance would have been, is going to be in that account, about eighty-six thousand, and that's real rough. It's based upon, actually, last year's report and some information that I know going forward. So, they're asking basically for fifty thousand this year, and that one thirty-five that you see in there is, um, what he would remove from that Capital Reserve Fund, in other words, what's float, floating in there? I.e., uh, he keeps a certain amount in there to make sure that he covers payroll. So, he's willing to take out a hundred and thirty, or commit a hundred and thirty-five thousand of that funds to this effort. So, you're talking, I mean, you're talking, what, two sixty, two seventy for this new ambulance?
So, my thing is, is I've never, I've never seen an ambulance on the CIP before. It's always just been.
You're right.
From the revolving.
I don't, yeah.
I don't ever remember it in the last three years.
Yeah, that I didn't check.
Four years.
Right.
I don't ever remember seeing an ambulance on there.
No, no, they, they have, that never has been.
The only thing I can see is that way back in twenty nineteen, you did approve seventy thousand going to this account, which is how that Capital Reserve account got up to eighty-six thousand. Because it only had a measly sixteen in it.
Well, that's fire department and equipment, that's not the ambulance revolving fund.
Actually, they all got kind of merged in that last, last warrant article. Because that's what happened, first it got created, then it got revised to say, and other associated equipment, because they had a separate equipment line, and they got merged. And then there was a revision, the, the last revision, where they basically said, and keeping it in service. And it also dissolved any of the, it made it clear that we were taking a measure or steps to combine all those funds. Is how it got put out.
The Dawson-Silver Street Improvement Project for sixty grand. So, this is the first year we're going to be, we've been putting this, putting that project on the CIP, I know there's going to be a warrant article.
No, it was, it was on the CIP last year or the year before, but I don't think it ranked this high last year.
Okay.
Or even the year before, but I know, I know Pat has presented it. When, when the planning board handled it, he presented it to the planning board, you know, at least once.
You're right, and it wasn't paid for as a CIP, i.e., let's say, a Capital Reserve Fund. It was a one-time twenty, twenty, I'm reading my own chart right. Sorry, one-time twenty twenty-one, um, warrant article at three forty-nine, three twenty-nine.
Right.
Period.
Yep.
Nothing prior years. Now, I think they're looking to establish a fund. And I think that's a prudent decision, given, um, that we're seeing legislation come out of Washington that could, um, partially or fully fund some of these projects, as long as they're in the pipeline, design-wise, readiness-wise.
How much? How much money do we need for the boat ramp? And I know we're talking five grand, but just out of curiosity, seeing we got twenty-six, five, roughly.
Well, I know we have, um, right now, we have, well, you know, you have the twenty-six, five. Um, she has about, I won't, no, I'm just rough, ask rough numbers here, there's about forty thousand in their cap, in their capital, no, in their, uh, revolving account.
Beach revolving?
Be, yeah, in the beach revolving account, there's about forty grand. Um, she's gonna, she used the twenty thousand that we okayed for the engineering, that leaves her six thousand left over. Um, you know, and then plus the, the forty, I mean, we, unfortunately, we just don't know how much the boat ramp, you know, is going to cost. I'm, I'm thinking, you know, um, I don't know, I'm thinking, I don't know how much, probably, I don't know, sixty, seventy thousand.
Yep.
Um, there is some monies that we possibly could move around down there, but, um, but the boat ramp is in, I mean, we, I, I know we're moving forward on getting it fixed, it's in such disrepair that, um, you know, the police won't even use it, the marine patrol, so. Well. I mean, I, I. I mean, you know, I, I understand, you know, because the ambulance is. I mean, you know, I, I understand, you know, because the ambulance is, you know, we, the thing is, it's, it's all changed now. I mean, the, the whole fire rescue thing has changed. I, I've, I've seen it. I know it's changed, because I've seen it in Barrington, where I work. So, I'm just, I'm just using other, other towns where I know that they're in the same situation that we are here. It's, it's real. It's not gonna go, ever go away, and it's, you know, it's the, uh, just having, you know, on-call or, you know, um, you know how they used to, I've lost all the words there, uh.
Just call Fire Department or call.
Yeah, I mean, when, you know, when your beeper went off, you, everybody ran to the fire station. It doesn't, it's not like that anymore, unfortunately. You know, it's just, that's gone. And, you know, we, we have to, unfortunately now, this is something we have to pay for, um. So, I, I, I get it, it just, I know it's a big pill to swallow, but, um, I mean, even if we put some, some money towards it, I, you know, I'm not saying, you know, maybe not the whole fifty thousand, but maybe something towards it. I mean, it's a, it's a number that we'll have to come up with, but, um. I mean, because this is, I mean, we're gonna have to chug, chug this up. We, we can't, seven hundred and seventeen thousand is, uh, out of the picture. I mean, hey, I get, CIP is a great tool, it's just, we, you know, we have to live within our means, um. So, we just gotta figure it out.
So here's, here's my recommendation. We go to the, through the top eleven projects, brings us down to the library renovation. I don't know what that total figure would be, but, and then, this is without offsetting everything, right? If we were to go and take, hold on, how did I forget? So take the top eleven projects, then obviously you roughly subtract, you subtract the roughly one twenty-nine from the road construction. My first thought was to take the fifty for the ambulance right out of there, but we can put ten in, or twenty. And then even if we put twenty in, and obviously the cruisers is not a tax levy, so that should bring us down to about three hundred and ninety-four thousand. If we did twenty for the ambulance and put the library renovation in there.
Alright, so the library is gonna replace, um, roof final phase. How much is in that?
Twenty.
No, but how much is in?
In the account?
Yeah.
Twenty thousand, three ninety-five.
I mean, because we have to start looking at some of these important things, like, the, um, you know, the, the, th- these are big money items, but they're very much needed, uh, you know, I'll just throw out the tractor with a boom. The, the current tractor they have is probably a nineteen fifty. Now, don't get me wrong, old, old equipment is nice, but when you're using it every day, like they do, um, that thing is on its very last leg, uh, you know, and these are important pieces of equipment to, to take care of the town, um.
Is that the X, what's listed as an X grade?
No, that's the Ford five thousand tractor with boom and mower.
The ditch mower, basically.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it does the, the roadside mowing. The thing, the thing, you know, is on its last leg, and I'm just using the, these for examples, um, you know, the, the excavator, that thing is in sad, sad shape. The, the wood chipper, I, I think came over on the Mayflower, um, you know, so, so these, these pieces of equipment, okay, everybody wants this stuff taken care of and, and done in the town, but when, when it can't get done, because everything is just old and broken, um, you know.
Well, Andy, back to that, so, item eleven about halfway down, um, payloader replacement with forks, Capital Reserve Fund.
Mm-hmm.
What's wrong with the payloader we have now?
Nothing. The, the payloader we have now is, is about five years old, six years old, I was on the board, five, six years old. Um, it's fairly new. Most of it was bought out of, uh, the revolving account down at the, uh, transfer station.
Okay.
Tech, you know, um, so, but, but that's in, you know, that's in decent shape. I mean, I was, I was talking about the rubber tire excavator.
Right.
That we have, that, um, that would be used well for a boat anchor, um, the thing is like.
Probably not even roadworthy anymore.
That's why, as, as a perspective, I, I, I have to admit, I'm somewhat perplexed as to, and, and I didn't do the rankings, um, I have to admit. I mean, that's, it's nothing against the, the Public Works, uh, staff or the presentation, but for instance, that payloader, I would have thought that'd be a ten to twenty-year item.
Mm-hmm.
And that, the, the biggest thing to go on it could be either the transmission or the, or the, the engine.
Mm-hmm.
But if, I mean, unless they've got, so, so I'm kinda surprised why that's on here and, and why it only rates just below the excavator, when I know the excavator's, yeah, really old, the rubber tire excavator.
Mm-hmm.
But then that, that Bandit Wood Chipper, I mean, the, the requested payment is, look to the right, is eight hundred and thirty-three dollars.
I know.
I mean.
Something like the wood chipper, I mean.
Seriously, Pat, we should be able to, we should be able to buy something like that, a, a chipper, at the end of the year, out of his budget. If, you know, if the money is there.
I would almost agree, I would agree with you. And, and where you've got the Highway Department Special Equipment Capital Reserve Fund, what qualifies as special equipment and what doesn't? If that Capital Reserve Fund's already there, uh, let's, let's look at the rolling stock and say, well, okay, these pieces of equipment we've identified as, if you will, specialized equipment, maybe the chipper's one of them. I don't know.
I'd consider it a special piece of equipment, because it's not something that gets used every day.
That was, that's, that's my point, right. And so I guess I'm kind, like, the payloader, to me, from a past PWD experience, that thing's used seven days a week. Um, the chipper I bought, I bet, down there, doesn't have a hundred hours on it. And it's a four-year-old chipper. So, in hindsight, I don't think I, my previous job, I should have let him talk me into that and buy it. Because, to be honest with you, it would have been cheaper to rent the thing than the amount. Now, I know why we bought it. It's there in case of an emergency, if there's trees down all over town, but, okay.
No question, obviously, years ago, four, four years ago, obviously, prices have changed. What'd that cost roughly, four years ago, to buy?
Five grand, six grand, I think it was.
Okay, so again, I mean, like you said, I mean, there's enough, there's enough money.
Yeah.
To buy it at the end of the year if we need to, if, if it was, if it's that bad, which I know it is, I'm su- I'm sure it is.
Yep.
But there's enough money in that account to, and again, four years ago, things have changed, a lot. I understand that, but there's enough money to buy it outright if we need it.
Yeah.
Rather than putting it on here, in my opinion.
How much money in that, how much money in that account?
Yeah, and I was surprised to see it, when you got thirty-four thousand in the Capital, in the, uh, special equipment, if it's really needed, there's the money to buy it.
And same, same with, I mean, I don't know what a, what a mower with a side boom, brand new, is gonna go for, but.
Yeah, probably about a hundred grand.
But we should start looking at some of these things realistically, too. You know, and if it's, I know it's bad, I've seen it up close. When they were, when they were mowing up on Hair Road, I've seen it parked at my brother-in-law's place. That thing's in rough shape, so I mean, if it's, if it's so bad, why wouldn't that be on its own separate warrant? If it fails, it fails, but if it passes.
But if it fails, no means no.
Right, for that year, but it can go again another year. Realistically. But, so that, that was, anyways, that was my recommendation, the top eleven.
Yeah, no.
Because of the way they ranked.
Yeah.
Take the ambulance down to ten or twenty grand. Um, and then, if we took it down to, to twenty, I think we'd be somewhere as around three ninety-four, three hundred.
Now, the three ninety-four, the, one of the stipulations we have to decide as part of doing this is, for instance, last year, under highway road construction, you raised three hundred of that money from taxation. Equated to thirty-four cents per thousand on the valuation. A number of those other things, um, the newer ones I have down is to be determined, but the rest of the things, the smaller Bridge Capital Reserve was unfunded balance. Municipal buildings, unfunded balance, a boat, you know, in other words, I guess the point I'm trying to make is, the voters are used to seeing some of these things funded through unfunded balance, and some of them, uh, taxation, direct taxation. So, um, if you were to put that same amount forward, that three hundred thousand, as in a, as a direct appropriation, it wouldn't change at the end of the year what the voters see as a tax impact, in other words, because it's not a, it's not a newer appropriation, it's one that they're used to seeing, I guess is the terminology. So, um, so I, I'm, I, I'm not as fixated on the balance of the numbers, as I'm fixated or, or focused on how would we pay for these things. Let's say, for instance, if you took all that money out of the unfun, unassigned fund balance, God, next year, there's gonna be a thirty-four cent decrease in the town's tax rate, because we took it out of the unassigned fund balance.
Right, but that'll put us in the same boat that we were in, what, two months ago?
Oh, I'm not recommending we do it.
Right, but, and I'm just, I'm, the only thing I'm saying is, is, that would, obviously, you'd have to, so I guess it wouldn't really be three ninety-four, because you'd have to put forward the whole three fifty for the road construction, or three whatever that we decide to put forward. So, you'd be somewhere as, you'd be four something, but still, realistically, the taxation is only about three ninety-four, four hundred thousand realistically, if we get it that way. And then, once we settle on that, then we can decide what, what we're gonna use for unassigned funds.
Yes, I would.
And how, how we would do that.
I think you're approaching it logically.
Well.
And I do agree that some of these other projects need, need to be funded.
Next year, it should be flopped.
I, I think so, too. That's, and that's what I'm saying, I mean, I, I think the, some of these other ones down at the bottom really should be funded, but, and maybe it's just on, and I know, I know the DPW director has projects that he wants to see funded first, and I understand that, but sometime, we gotta start funding some of these, so that way some of this equipment can be replaced, but, I mean, if we're, if, if he's not gonna push it, then why should we?
Well, I, I don't necessarily don't think he's not pushing it, because I, I think he's, the representation is there, I just, you know, um, I don't know, sometimes.
He's trying to bal, right, he's trying to balance, um, his needs with the expectations of the voters, etc.
Right.
What we're all trying to do, so I don't, I, that's why I say I don't disagree with. He's had to make some tough choices.
Oh, yeah, no, I agree.
I mean, I mean, the, the four trucks down there aren't going away neither, that situation, so, that's something else we gotta.
But he has that to be funded in twenty twenty-three.
Yeah, he'd be asking you to approve it this year in the budget, but the first payment wouldn't land until twenty twenty-three.
Yeah.
The trucks, the first lease payment of ninety.
Ninety thousand.
Doesn't hit till twenty twenty-three, so there'd be no fiscal impact in twenty twenty-two.
Right.
But he has to get the trucks ordered almost a year ahead of time, if you wanna see them in twenty-three. So that will be a warrant article that he'd be asking for. Be interesting to see how the DRA asks us to word it, because you know how we put down the bottom, the fiscal impact in twenty twenty-two is zero. We also should put down that the fiscal impact in twenty twenty-three is, and how do you accurately represent that, because it's based upon an assessed value we have no clue about? We know right now we're five hundred and some million dollars, but I don't know if we're gonna be five twenty, five ten, five oh five by twenty twenty, I don't know. So it's a real, I won't say, it's a really, uh, it's a real estimated number. It's a projected number. There is no, I don't think anyone can actually say what that impact will be in twenty twenty-three. And the other thing is, you should point out, and it has to point out to the voters, that it's a multi-year contract. It's, I forget how many years of lease he wants to do it, um, it'll be.
I think it was four, wasn't it?
Yeah, it'll have to be advertised over four or five years.
Yeah.
In other words, notice the voters that it is a multi-year contract, and will have a test fiscal impact in those years.
Right.
So now, when you said the top eleven, was that on the ranking order chart, or the?
That was, that was the lower chart.
Okay.
So the top eleven projects on the lower.
On the lower chart.
Yeah.
Make sure we're talking on the same. Yeah, because the number twelve one is actually for the school, even though it's listed here as the CIP, it's a school-funded item, it's not a town.
Which, which one is that one, Chris?
Uh, it says, purchase twenty eighteen, one, one ton dump truck with plow sander.
Oh, two vehicles.
In twenty twenty-six, pickup with plow, right. The school's apparently looking to do a Capital Reserve Fund of some sort, as item twelve. But that's not your item. It's the school's item.
Right.
They actually are looking into using their COVID relief money, because they have no vehicles now.
I heard about that, yeah.
And I believe that they will be able to use that to get a new, if they can find one.
No vehicles? What happened to their vehicles? What happened to the trucks that they had?
They, they broke down. The dump truck slid down the, um, the brakes went and slid down the elementary, where the playground is, took up the swings.
Did they not maintain these vehicles?
Well, apparently, uh, from what the custodian said, is because they haven't been used consistently, normally used and running during the winter, that things were, things had failed as a result of not being used.
There's no excuse for that, in my opinion.
That, this.
I know you're just, I know, I know, but there's no excuse for that.
So they are in immediate search of a vehicle to replace at least one of them, so they have no sander, no equipment at this point.
Well, what's wrong with getting in the truck and running up down the, to the transfer station or?
And this is a new custodian, so he's not necessarily, you know, got. And this is a new custodian, so he's not necessarily, you know, at fault.
I'm not saying, I'm not saying anybody's at fault, other than lack of preventative maintenance.
Lack of knowledge.
That too.
Unfortunately, but that's a for another whole, whole, uh.
I'm just letting you know they don't have.
I know, I'm not shooting the messenger.
But they do have funding, and I I believe that that funding will be able to to help them if they can find a vehicle now.
It's just things like that irritate me.
There's all kinds of them down in the mass.
There you go.
Coming out.
Well, let Mr. Shute know.
Yeah, all right, so. So, I mean, I'm all, I mean, I I'd like to, I'd like to see as, I mean, I'm I'm willing to take twenty thousand out of the ambulance. Um, this is just compensation, um. And.
You mean to lower the request from fifty to thirty?
Yeah. And, um. Yeah, so, I mean, where would that, where would that? That would put us like at four?
Four oh four, three hundred. That's what I have.
Yeah, what, Madam Chair?
Four oh four, three hundred, four hundred, four thousand.
Yeah, but 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 what was that, how much was that taken out of?
Took out twenty thousand for the ambulance.
Oh, you do, you took out twenty?
Mm-hmm.
So it left at four oh four?
Yep. And that includes, uh, item eleven, the library request. Unless I have this map incorrect, but that's what I have.
I mean.
And that's actually, I I should take that back, that that also includes the one twenty-nine for the road construction.
So in that four oh four, it includes the one twenty-nine?
Yeah, deducted.
Oh, deducted.
Yes, deducted, so you'd have to add that back in.
Yeah, but if you, um. From appropriation perspective of the four oh four, if you had the three hundred thousand raised by taxation. That would leave a hundred and four thousand, let's say, uh, uh, towards the unassigned fund balance. And that would be in keeping with what you did last year because you had a hundred and nine thousand spent, uh, last year from the unassigned fund balance.
So that's if we go with three hundred on the road construction?
Right.
And not the three fifty, I'm gonna tell you right up straight, you don't get much done for three hundred grand.
I'm 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 sorry, my, the four oh four is not my number, what, what was the number you included, buddy, three hundred or four? Three hundred or three fifty, sorry?
I included.
So if we do.
Sorry.
All right, so if we do the top eleven projects, which is the library up.
Thirty.
The total with thirty thousand for the ambulance, instead of the fifty, the total's five sixty-eight, three hundred. Then. Would is is technically taxable, or is taxable. Then you subtract the thirty-five thousand for the cruisers, 'cause that's not really taxable, 'cause it comes out of his budget, five thirty-three, three hundred. Then. I mean, if you went and subtracted the one twenty-nine.
Yeah, that's what I have, yep, that's the four oh four, three hundred.
Yeah, that's the four oh four, three hundred.
So once you add that one twenty-nine, then you had five, what'd you say, thirty-three, three hundred.
Yeah, five thirty-three, three hundred.
Hmm, I mean, um. I'm all right with that, I mean, let let the voters vote on it. You know? We all have a vote. Period. I do think, I do think moving along in the future here that. The roles in here need to be changed, the way these are numbered, you know? So next year, it just can't, can't be like this.
Well, so we provided a set of questions that apply those rankings.
Right, and it gives, it's a, sorry.
Go ahead.
But so every project, every single one of these projects that's presented to the now CIP committee. They're provided a list with each project on it, and they get rated and ranked from zero to ten. And as to like the need for it, um, whether it's a safety issue, all that stuff. So the CIP committee goes through and says, okay, you know, obviously, the radios ranked the highest, so that was probably a. All across the board, I'd say was probably a, a nine and a ten, or an eight and a ten all across the board, roughly. From everybody's standpoint. So.
Well.
As long as all these top projects get presented every year, that's probably roughly how they're gonna get rated and ranked every single year. Unless you get newer people on the CIP committee and they say, nope, a chipper's more important, or the GIS is more important. Or the the ditch mower is more important, something like that. And one, and one vote, one person can skew the whole entire thing because one year, a fire truck, as they say, somebody. Somebody went and said, everybody voted and say, or ranked, rated and ranked, a new fire truck. It was nines or eights all across the board, one person can go and throw in there, uh, a one and a one, and that'll drop it down considerably.
And this is just a recommendation, I mean, if you think that there's something that really should be added, we can certainly do that.
In the past years, I've moved things up. And.
Yep.
I've moved things around, I mean, but, you know, I mean, this is a lot of hard work by this committee, I I'm certainly not gonna, you know. I, they've done their due diligence, it looks like, and, um, you know, I I praise them for their work. It's just, um, I guess, you know, I'm a DPW guy, too, so that's why I, you know, when I see this mower.
Well, there's a lot for DPW, too, so that's the other, you know.
He's got what?
That's the other balance here is.
Well, it's, they're all in the bottom, though, unfortunately, the only thing that was rated was trucks, and, you know.
Well, and I think that. It's, it's also road construction.
He's got sixteen, DPW's got sixteen projects on here.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
And I know he's gonna have.
I mean, he shouldn't.
A large amount.
I mean, like, like, like DP, I mean, he, some of them are are road stuff, though, I mean. You know, that's not really mov- moving his department forward by, I mean.
Four of the eleven projects are his.
You know, I mean, and I know a lot of this is just a con- uh, conversation, I mean, you know, the garage, they wanna get some engineering. Um, some money put away for the engineering, I mean, that, that garage is in. Some serious rough shape in there, so, I mean, this is just stuff we we gotta think about in the future, that's all.
Didn't that, I think the garage engineering, one or two years ago, was fairly high up.
It's probably the year everything failed.
They didn't get it, you know.
Yeah, it might have been. Yeah, no, I I realize.
I went back to the, when I put this spreadsheet together, I went back and read all three years' reports, so if it had been a warrant article in twenty nineteen, it would have made this list.
Yeah.
So nineteen, twenty, or twenty-one.
Well, if anything, just the conversation, talking about it, enlightens people, and it, um.
It's, it's not an easy task, by all means, because, you know, everything's important.
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm.
No, we're just a small town and.
At the same time, we have to be respectful of the taxpayers' money.
We just have to, yeah, well, no more stuff, definitely.
And I mean, there are some of these items on the lower half, I mean. They might be able to be funded either with unassigned or, uh, what's the, uh, unexpended items by the end of the year. You know, within their budgets, so. I know some of them are, have a pretty tight budget, but.
So, Chris, if we went with that, so say we go with that five thirty-three, three hundred.
Yeah.
Can we safely take a hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars to put towards this and still be in okay shape?
You mean, like, unassigned fund balance progress?
Yes.
Yeah.
And just, well, before we, I don't think you need to cast that. I think you've made a step in the right direction, you don't need to cast this decision in concrete.
No, no, I'm.
The next decision is to go down through the warrant articles, look at the sum total of the warrant articles, 'cause you may have some that you wanna take off. Because we are definitely putting on others. Uh, now that you've, you know, said yes, you wanna do, um, let's say, the commercial re- safety committee radio replacement, that's a new article. Um, purchased tasers X two, uh, or that's a, that's a possible, another warrant article. Um, so, no, I think you've you've kinda reached that decision, and you've you've bounced numbers around in portions. Um, your final, final decision is what you decide to move forward as warrant articles, and how you decide to fund those warrant articles.
Well, and some of these, like the tasers, I mean, uh, you know, I think it's good that it's on a capital improvement plan, I mean.
Right.
It's good that he doesn't, he he's not asking the taxpayers, you know, to appropriate, you know, whatever. Um, he's just asking, I mean, why raise the money twice if he can just get it out of the capital improvement plan?
Well, it's, it's a thirty thousand dollar item in total.
Mm-hmm.
Um, he knows that, you know, roughly, he's gonna need ten of them, three thousand apiece, but he's, he's prudently asking for them very early on.
Yeah, I know, 'cause we just bought them.
Really get.
We just bought all new tasers, so I know this is, he's just.
Just planning for the future.
Yeah, no, I, and that's, yeah.
And the smaller that balance is, the easier it is for us to adjust for that, but when it's.
And easier for the voters to.
Fifty thousand dollars in two years, that's a lot.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
And there's not too much planning in that.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
And that's what makes it really challenging.
Now, do we have a total cost? Rough estimate for the radio replacements? Over X amount of years?
He he's.
I know they're asking, all three of them are asking for thirty thousand.
But I do know this, that, uh, some of the ARPA money that the county got, the county is looking to do a county-wide. Uh, radio replacement upgrade with their money. And part of it will mean, and I was told this by executive counselor and a county commissioner. The part of the, they're gonna handle the software upgrades, in other words, they'll come to the bottom of the software. And and. They're trying to use their ARPA grant money to also assist each one of the communities proportionally. So that's why he put down, uh, possible federal grant, that's what they're talking about. It's just that the county hasn't made that total. One of my glasses.
There it is.
He hasn't made the total commitment yet, but that's where that money may come from.
Okay, so.
So let's say you put down thirty and the whole project's ninety, then the, then, to your point, Andy, it won't appear on next year, and the, and the, and the county and the feds get involved. It won't be here on next year's warrant, the twenty twenty-two warrant for twenty twenty-three, because it got done.
Right. Well, if there's a grant there to get, I mean, the fire department always.
Right, and I I think they're prudent in putting it in because every one of those grants says, how much is the community stepping up to the plate to assist in the grant? And that's where they're being smart by putting it in.
So, if you wanna see, this was the, uh, from twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-seven. And the total.
Yeah.
On the radios is one eighty.
One eighty, okay.
Mm-hmm.
Wow.
But that is for all three stations, so.
All three departments?
All three departments, yep.
So the, I think it's roughly sixty grand apiece. Wow, that's a lot of money, radios.
I know, I know.
Well, it's probably radios, towers, uh, the repeater gear. That's, that's where I got sunk in, my previous life was.
But.
There were radios, warrant only two grand, the repeater gr- gear was fifty, yeah.
But it's unfortunate that it's.
And then I didn't do antenna.
It's a necessity.
And it's all updating.
Yeah.
That was the other thing that, um, chief had said, that. They don't have it, they they won't work.
Right.
So we're pushed into that situation regardless.
Okay, I mean, I'm I'm fine with Matt's recommendation.
I am also fine with that, I know that there, that was one of the, um, recommendations that, uh, from CIP is. Usually, it's like the top ten, eleven, somewhere around five hundred thousand, so we've kind of met that a little bit.
Yeah.
Right in between, so. I agree. Should we look at the other warrant articles, that's what you were recommending, Chris, before we decide, or?
Yes, I would.
Okay.
All right, I think that's the next logical stop, it was also the next thing on here.
Okay, so we'll, before we go ahead and vote on that, we should look at the other warrant articles and.
Oh, yeah, most definitely. Yeah.
I would agree.
All right.
So what I did with respect to the twenty twenty-two warrant was took last year's warrant, um. Changed the names to protect the innocent, uh, changed the dates. Uh, I did have a verbal request today that, uh, school board would like to go first at nine AM this year. Um, they feel, they've, they've been in second place for long enough. I can empathize with their, um, so I would edit the, uh, the warrant to reflect that. Um. I'd skip over article one, the election of officers, I don't have a full list from, uh, Michelle yet, I did put in the ones that I knew about. Uh, there's zoning ordinances, uh, articles two, three, and four, I believe it's gonna be two articles coming forward. Uh, the planning board has to make their final decision, I believe if it's not tomorrow night. Uh, they were talking also having a second meeting. On January eighteenth, um. To finalize those. Uh, warrant article budget, again, uh, we just got that number from the, from the, uh. Budget committee, but, uh, their public hearing is, uh, January seventeenth, which is also Civil Rights Day. Um, and. We were aware of that, so then the first article that you come to that's really reflective of the, the CIP is to, you know, what do we put in for? Uh. Highway road reconstruction fund, see if the town will be raising appropriate to some of, and I take it you, do you wanna go with the three fifty and? Approximately showing one twenty-nine, and I asked Pat, do we have a number from them yet, i.e. the highway block grant, and we do not. As of yet, so. And what is your choice?
What did we ask for the the year before, what did we ask for?
The year before.
Well, the, these, these are, you pulled these from last year, these warrants?
And that's why it's, it's got a line through it.
Yeah.
Right.
Right, but didn't that one increase the deliberative to three fifty?
It did.
It probably did.
Yeah, okay.
Tw- wow, what was actually in the. Ballot last year, right, was three hundred thousand, a hundred and twenty-nine, uh, three hundred thousand got approved, it was three fifty the year before. That did not get approved, it was three twenty-five in nineteen, that did get approved.
Yeah.
So apparently, the voters feel that somewhere between. Three hundred and three twenty-five is nice, three fifty is maybe not? And the, uh, offsetting balance was, uh, one twenty-nine, then it was one thirty-four, and it was one thirty-four the year before that. Just to give you an idea. I don't expect that the gas tax money, which is what this comes from, or road tolls. I don't expect that the gas tax money, which is what this comes from, or road tolls, uh, is going to be up much higher, only because we still did have COVID impact and that reduced both the tolls and the gas usage. So if I'm a betting man, I don't see that number going up.
Can't imagine if we won one twenty-nine.
Yeah.
If anything, it's less.
I would say I would say put it in at the three fifty, but obviously have the note saying will be offset.
Yes.
Can we do, can we put the offset approximately?
Yeah.
One hundred and twenty something?
Yeah, I'll put in, I'll put, is anticipated the town receive funds in the amount of one hundred and twenty-nine thou from the Henshaw. This will be a non-lapsing, so it's, it's always, and this is wording that was approved before.
Yeah, anticipated is a.
By DRA, so it's clear to the voters that we anticipate getting that money. It's happened for the last ten years, so I think the anticipation factor is high, but the dollar number, we don't really know. And again, you've got to have, um, we should probably open this up as a public hearing on the twenty-seventh, just to make sure, because it's such a high amount, I believe it's anything over a hundred thousand requires a public hearing, so we're going to advertise this and look at the, this would be the one item on there that's got a big number.
Yeah, I'm fine with, I mean, three hundred and fifty thousand, you don't get much done. I mean, I, I understand it's a lot of money. You know, it's a lot of money to me, it should be a lot of money to everybody, but unfortunately for three fifty, you know, Chris.
Oh, in the road world, yes, it doesn't buy you much.
Doesn't really do much, but.
Yeah.
He does the best he can, so, with the money he has, so.
So Article Number Six, then, um, if that's a consensus is, um, and you don't need, as I guess, say, a final vote till the twenty-seventh. Uh, Article Six, it appears that it's not being requested to be on the ballot.
No, just a.
Just a.
Sixty thousand dollar appropriation.
Sixty thousand. So it almost sounds like it should be reworded to a capital reserve fund for Dawson Street drainage improvements. Okay. And if I were to write that, would you want it to come from taxation or, um, out of the capital reserve?
For what?
Uh, the sixty thousand for the Dawson Street Capital Reserve Fund.
Let's say out of the, uh, out of the fund ba- out of the capital fund balance.
Hmm.
Want you?
Yes, I mean, it's, we're going to be adding that onto here then? Is that what you?
Well, he's talking about how, 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 how you want it worded in the, of course, in the warrant articles, but.
It was already in, it was already in the number you were discussing earlier.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's, uh.
Oh, sorry.
So it's not an additional amount.
Fourth one down.
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, that's it.
Nope, I was trying to get it. Uh, Bridge Capital Reserve Fund, Article Seven, uh, was twenty-five thousand before.
Twenty-five now?
It's in here, yeah, what am I?
Yeah, it's twenty-five now.
Okay. So that would stay the same?
Yep.
Uh, Article Eight, Municipal Buildings Capital Reserve Fund.
I don't even I don't even think that one's on here. It's not in the top eleven.
And this is the thing that, um, and I have to admit, before as moderator, I would never ask, uh, because it didn't really. There's ninety-four thousand in this fund. Um, I thought that any building, and this is, strikes me as a layperson question, just a resident question. Isn't any building, including the Milton Mills Free Public Library, a municipal building and entitled to withdraw from that fund? And, and are we?
Well, then, why, why would it have its own?
That's what I'm gonna guess.
So I guess before we move forward with, well, so municipal buildings isn't even on in the top, top eleven that we decided on, but.
I don't think it's on there at all.
No, I don't think so either. Um, but I guess that before we finalize all this, we should find out if that can be used, because if it can, then why don't we just take the twenty thousand?
I think it can, because we use money out of this for the school, for the old schoolhouse to get roofed.
Okay. So I think.
I don't know what's, what's the difference.
I don't either, but I think that would be something to look into, Chris, if you have the time this week.
Okay.
Um, and find out, because if it can, then why don't we just use that twenty thousand instead?
It's a municipal building.
Right.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't see why, one, yeah, find out.
Okay. So put a pin in that one.
That would low, lower it down to three, you know, something.
Five twenty, five thirteen.
Well, after the one twenty-nine.
Right. Well, five thirteen prior to the one twenty-nine. Give or take off of that.
Okay. Uh, Article Nine, Boat Ramp Repair was five K for last.
Bridges. Did we do the bridges already? Yeah, we did, sorry, never mind, go ahead.
Sorry, did we?
Yeah, we did, because bridges was before municipal buildings.
Yeah, I just wrote down the same.
Yeah. Yep.
Um, Boat Ramp Repair, again, Article Nine, um, five, do you want to stay with five? I think that five what was put in this, yes, was put in.
Yeah, that's what's in here.
CIP?
Yeah.
Yep.
Uh, and that would bring us to nine. I'm not nine, is the vote. So Article Ten is the Milton Free Library Capital Reserve Fund. So does that tie to Article Eight?
I mean, I think that gives four more to ask. I mean, we even used some of that revenue to put the heat in at the townhouse. At the, um.
Mm-hmm. Because it's municipal.
Yeah, so I don't see why it'd be an issue.
Well, you know, the same thing's going to come up later on. There's a proposed article here at the bottom. And that is to take, the historical society would like the town to take back the building that they're leasing for a dollar. And part of the reason is, one, if we can then ensure it as, like, in a, in a group with all of our other buildings.
Mm-hmm.
And secondly, if there is a maintenance issue that comes up, it can be handled by the town.
Mm-hmm.
Pre-existing.
The other thing, unfortunately, it's kind of falling apart, right?
Well, they just had the roof redone.
Oh, they did.
Yeah, or, or fixed. I don't know if it was totally redone or if it was fixed, but I know the roof the roof leaking.
Right.
Issue has been, uh, taken care of.
Mm-hmm. All right, so what's the next one?
So Article Ten is the, you know, for the twenty thousand for the Milton Mills, but if, when I answer the question for eight.
Yeah.
Maybe that question also will be utilized.
Yeah.
To answer ten.
Quite possibly.
Okay.
So if that so if that falls under a municipal building.
Mm-hmm.
And what we're working on, trying to figure out here, couldn't those two CRFs be combined, or would that be a bad idea?
They could be. You know, and it also begets the question, um, why does the Public Works Department need their own separate capital reserve fund for their own building engineering, when if it's a building, it's a building?
And that is.
I mean, I mean, I never asked that question ten years ago when we were creating all these funds, but it just.
I mean, to me, it just seems monotonous to have all these separate funds.
Well, that is the one, as a moderator, I can say that is one of the most common questions I get. Why does every little thing have its own capital reserve fund? Because back before it was, and I don't mean to pick on Public Works, it's just, they had Dump Truck Fund, Special Equipment Fund. Um, and, and I can remember years ago that two of those special equipment funds got combined, because one was for the a knuckle for the boom, but the other fund was for, uh, the rake on the, the, the grader. And to the voters, they're like, I don't see why, and well, why am I, they felt guilty for voting one against the other, and didn't, and, and I didn't have as moderator a good reason to tell them what one was, how different it was from the other, plus that's not really the moderator's job to, to try and influence or give information, influence the voter.
A better, a better idea would be just by department.
E- exactly.
And then they can pick and choose what they are going to need for that year, what they need, and we don't have to sit there and worry about.
You know, you're right, if you look at police, if one year it's radios, but the next year it's tasers, but the next year, or the next budget cycle, it's, uh, the short barrel rifles, that's their call within their department and let one capital reserve fund.
Maybe that just wasn't thought through when they put that in, so.
Yeah, I.
Do you know how much more we owe on, I know this is like way off the record here, we're talking about warrant articles, but I was just curious about the grader. Do you know what the balance is on that?
I think I can actually safely tell you that.
Is that a CIP?
Yeah, it's, I'm going back to the CIP workbook financial spreadsheet that they sent, yeah.
Two thousand fifteen grader.
Wow.
Oh, yeah. So total one oh seven, one seventy.
That's what we owe?
No, that's what the final balance will be, but they have, uh.
Final balance.
That's what they're looking to raise.
Wow.
So, well, I know, I mean, it was like, the grader was like two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, so, and we're only paying a bond on it of twenty-six thousand a year, so.
Yep, and it's going through till twenty twenty-five is when it ends.
Okay, that was my question.
I'm sorry, yep.
So twenty twenty-five, so.
It's getting there.
We're getting there. Chucking away, it's like paying that car payment, you know, one more.
The wheels don't fall off, all right.
That's not my car payment. Maybe at the beginning of the year it looks like that, I don't know.
Okay, uh, on to Article Eleven, Technology Upgrade Fund, um, fifteen hundred last year, uh, it didn't rank high this year on the CIP.
What is this, the GIS?
Yeah, Geographic Information System.
Well, they get, and the GIS.
No, GIS has its own separate warrant.
Correct.
They got like thirty-five.
And it's all fun, right.
Right, and they have a, they already have a balance of thirty-four thousand, five hundred.
They have thirty-five, yeah. So I think we'll be all set there this year.
So that would just come from that, right, the CRF?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Well, that's not even, that wasn't even rated, was it? The GIS?
It, uh, right, it fell.
No, it's way down, so really have to worry about.
Yeah, it fell, uh, really, well, almost twentieth on the list.
Okay.
So what are you saying, strike it?
For this year, I'd say yes.
The G, the GIS, yeah. No, what about the technology upgrade?
I'd say strike that too, there's twenty-six thousand dollars in it.
Okay, we were talking two things, okay. That technology is yeah, the technology upgrade has twenty-six thousand in it, and the GIS system has thirty-four thousand.
Yeah, I think we can, uh, mix both those.
Okay.
For me.
At least for this year, yeah.
The only thing I could say is if I had to do what, for instance, uh, we talked about speaker system upgrades in here, camera systems, I would take it out of the technology fund.
Most definitely.
Okay.
Yeah.
The cameras aren't that old, so.
No, it's just people, more of them, uh, Pat's raised the issue, we need speakers in the back, better, but I've been holding off on that decision because it's tied to the building up the road.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
So I didn't want to expend the money here and then rip it out of the wall. Um, okay, so you're saying to pause on both of those this year?
For me, um, it's a board.
Yeah. For this year, I'm fine with that.
Okay.
I'm.
Taking both of those off this year.
All right, um.
Do you think that's?
Let's see, uh, eradicate invasive plant species, it did appear on the
Yep.
Uh, European niad appeared, uh, tenth on the list of eleven.
Yeah, ten thousand, it behooves us not to do it. It's a very, very important warrant article.
Okay.
If you ask me.
Do we know how much money they have?
Well, I know that they had five thousand in the account, but there was a transfer, and I know the bill was sixty-two hundred. So I know that we spent part of the encumbrance and all the money that was appropriated in the prior year.
Mm-hmm.
Sixty-two was our portion.
Unfortunately, it's just something that we're going to have to, I mean, this, we just got to continue doing this, unfortunately, and it's just very, very important. Um, this, if we don't, I mean, this will affect people in the mills. If, if this lake goes away, it affects the whole town, the mills everywhere, if this, if we don't continue doing this. So it's just, we're all in this fight together.
Okay.
My, my, my opinion.
Moving on to Article fourteen, uh, if you don't mind.
Yeah.
Uh, Historical Building Milton Mills, this, uh, is in blue because it's something that I added or changed. Uh, we sent this request off to the attorneys. This is the, uh, wording they came back with to see if the town would authorize the acquisition of land buildings currently owned and occupied by the Milton Historical Society. Fifty-six Main Street Milton Mills for purchase price of one dollar, and to appropriate the sum of one dollar for this purpose, and further to authorize the Board of Selectmen, we would lease the building back to the Milton Historical Society. I chose for a term twenty years with potential renewal terms of ten years each. Um, and there would be a separate, she also drew up a separate lease agreement, should this be approved, between the Historical Society and the town. They wanted certain conditions in there, for instance, they didn't want, uh, a future Public Works Director to decide that vinyl siding was great and apply vinyl siding to a historic building. Or to take out those windows and put in Anderson vinyl thermal panes. In other words, they, they want to make sure it stays historical in character and nature.
I'm fine with it.
Yeah, I'm fine.
So, yeah, so this would just be a, it's almost like it's a non-fiscal thing, it's more of a housekeeping business, but Ryan.
Well, it could be a fiscal thing.
Eventually.
Yeah, Ryan Tebow was, uh, had brought this to my attention earlier in the summer, and thankfully he stayed on me like a tick on a dog, so I got it done, and, um, the second one that's, uh, would be Article Fifteen. Uh, I think they were here and explained to you that the Conservation Commission wants to establish a legal defense capital reserve fund. Um, they would actually, it doesn't really appropriate new money, it would take the thousand dollar that's actually in their budget in the proposed, uh, twenty twenty year, uh, sorry, twenty-two fiscal year, and move that each and every year onto that capital reserve fund.
Mm-hmm.
So then they have a, if they have a five or ten thousand dollar legal budget, they would have sufficient funds in the capital reserve fund.
Yeah, I mean, it's the same way we really did it with the, uh, with, with the, the niad.
Yep.
You know, that's a non-lapse and, uh, warrant article, so, I mean, I don't have a problem with it, it's just.
Yep, and I have received one, uh, request for petition articles so far, uh, was submitted earlier. Uh, Michelle did verify the number of voters already. It is a re, uh, posting of, uh, one very similar that was in last year's. Uh, I'm not sure if this is the expansion, but they talk about solar, wind, and wood energy systems. Um, and they're following the language that was pushed out through, by the state, if you were going to follow those. Um, the, one of the things, um, that I'll have to work on with Brittany is determinating, determining, yeah. Uh, an estimated. uh, an estimated tax impact, uh, I don't know how I.
Yeah, cause that got screwed up at the deliberative session last year.
How do I estimate how many of these solar energy systems, wind powered systems or wood heating systems currently exist in the community? Uh, and thus establish a value for them and then determine, it'd almost be like, you know, if you increase elderly tax exemption, what's the tax impact because it shifts the burden, it decreases the property values, so it takes the tax, uh, amount to be raised by taxes and spreads it over a slightly smaller amount.
I remember this was gonna be pennies though.
So is this, now is this retroactive?
Uh, no.
Is this gonna go back or is this just a new?
Well, I think anyone that already has one included.
Yeah.
Presently existing. Like Mr. Hussey has a small electrical, uh, generating turbine on his property. I don't know what the assessed value of that is, could look it up on a card, but then it would go back to, you know, people that put in, uh, you know, solar energy panels on the roof, what, what does that, you know, anticipate? And I'm sure, I don't know what I'm sure of. I'm with you on this one. But it is one that we got by petition.
Yeah, and hopefully the petitioner will come in and educate everybody, I'm sure they will. You know, on this whole warrant article.
Okay.
So, cause if they don't, chamo on, because.
Alright, so my goal is to put this back on the, on your agenda for the twenty seventh and get, and one, have a hearing on the, um, the highway road construction money, on the compliance of the law, and then secondly, to get you vote ea- on each and every one, is to say whether you recommend, so we can come up with the three zero zero, two zero zero, two one one, whatever. Uh, as your support for those particular warrant articles. With that, on the twenty seventh, I would then send that on to the Budget Committee, uh, for their final topic yet, so that they can hold on.
Yeah, what about, um, do, I mean, do you guys have any warrant articles that, that you're interested in putting on? Nope. Now what up?
I, I know that we had talked about, um, the elected positions, uh, is there any further?
Oh yeah, that, right, that would be the, that would be the one.
Further, um, information about that?
Yeah.
I haven't done anything since Wednesday night, no, just what I told you Wednesday night, you're right, that would be.
Okay.
I mean, I'm not gonna lie, for myself, I'm not, I, I, I won't even entertain it, you can do your research.
Now, you could say, that's always been a topic of discussion. I know in a prior life, forty was the number of warrant articles that the BOS wanted to leave on them, uh, because the voters would have been.
Yeah, they'd go to.
One year they got a fifty two.
Pull up to the chairs, yep.
Yeah, they got a fifty two article, uh, ballot and you'd have thought they would, there was gonna be a lynch at the end of the day. You could honestly say, you know, based upon what you know now, this is enough, Chris, or.
Well, I know, I know there's one, I know there's one petition that will, yeah, pending, there's one petition that's pending and we should have it by the, before the eleventh, on or before the eleventh. So that'll.
Those we can't really do anything about anyways.
Right.
Those have to go on.
Yeah.
Right, but exact, but, but like he said, you know, in, in his past life, forty, they got fifty two, but.
I like to.
But we just struck two, so we're down to, uh, fifteen, fourteen now.
I like to keep it under twenty myself, for me.
Yeah.
But that, yeah, that'll, I mean, that'll still keep us under twenty, but I just know, I know that there's at least one, minimum one petition coming in.
I mean, I mean, you, I mean, you can look into it, cause we talked about it, but
Mm-hmm.
uh, for me, I'm not, I wouldn't entertain, uh, I'm, for me, I'd like to try to get a, get a, rid of elected positions, not put more on.
Right, well, this would just be separating the two, right.
Right, but you would actually be putting more on, because you'd be.
Yeah, if you separate, right.
Right, you'd be putting another, another elected position and for me, that's for me.
Uh-huh.
It's my own, my own opinion that.
Yeah, as I say, it's, uh.
I'm, I'm not entertaining it, but, it's, I like to.
You mean the, the collector and the clerk?
Yeah.
Right, but also, the other question was elected positions versus being appointed in the future.
Right.
Just because of the fact of.
That has to be, it's a, another whole separate article.
Right, right, but because of what we're seeing, the requirements that are really needed for those positions and, you know, the experience one may or may not have.
Unless we go to a city form of government, we can't appoint, uh, this legislature would have to change electing a clerk. And then that's, uh, there's been zero motion on the legislative front, so the only thing, you know, so if that position, if the warrant article went forward and you had a tax, you separated the clerk and the town clerk and the tax collector's position, at the next election, three years from now, that board would have the appoint, opportunity to appoint a tax collector. That's it, it's all it gives you, because it would have no effect on Article number one on this year's ballot, which is still to elect a combined tax clerk and.
But it makes both, both the positions elected, not just, it makes them both elected, the tax and the town.
No, but by state law, you can appoint.
Well, yeah, if you put it on the ballot, but we've put, we've put that, we've put stuff on the ballot before and unfortunately it fails.
Right.
You know, uh, you know.
So you may see, you see this as slightly an act of futility. As I say, with, with Michelle not running, um, it, the opportunity existed at this time to do so. I think you, and, and I, I don't know, as I said, this, as it came as a request from, you know, the former assistant uh, town clerk who was, who is a resident and if, but if the, if the board has no inclination to move forward with it, then I, I, I see both sides to it. And you're right, I'd be one less person I'd have to interview, if it stays the way this, you know, the same as it is. And I think people appreciate being able to come up, hey, I'm, it's December, I'm here to register my car and I'm gonna pay my property taxes. You both, otherwise you could end up having to come back twice to the same one.
You could end up with different, uh, oh my gosh, I don't even wanna think about it, could be such chaos. It's not worth it, it's been that way before in this office. It didn't, for me, it didn't work, that's why it's changed back to what it is today.
Alright.
You know, so, but.
Yeah, vote back in on that, yeah. Yeah, I don't, I don't mind, as I say, I'm just, just the messenger, but I, I don't have a dog in this hunt.
I don't wanna put more work on, I don't wanna put more work. Right, I just don't wanna put more work on your lap that, that, for me, I'm fine with it the way it just is.
Okay.
But, but that's a, it's a board decision. I mean, we already made a decision for you just to look into what the warrant, to what the warrant article would, would say, but.
To look into it, right. Mm-hmm. But it does mean spending, uh, legal dollars.
I, yeah, definitely don't wanna, I don't wanna spend legal.
Save four hundred dollars in legal dollars and. Call it up.
Do you wanna spend money at, you know, do you wanna, do you wanna spend, you know, tax revenue on?
Call it a drop.
My concern is just, we're gonna, my concern is that we still spend money anyway, cause now with a new person, that person who is probably not trained is going to have to be trained. Alright, so there's expenses in that as well.
Yeah, yeah. Mm-hmm.
So, um.
But that's all in the budget.
I understand that, but it's, it's also the process, so versus if you were to have someone that's appointed, you have someone that has the experience, same thing with DPW. If I ran for DPW, I wouldn't really be a good person for that position because I don't have many of the licenses needed and all that, that's my concern, is that there's a lot to be expected in those positions. And I know that this was discussed before, so that's why I bring it up, because are we setting ourselves up, you know, in three more years or however, you know, whoever goes into that position, are they gonna, going to be prepared for that position, are they experienced? That's all I'm saying.
Mm-hmm. Yep.
So, that's that. So looking back at the CIP items that were on these warrant articles, I've counted, I think, six that are already on the CIP.
Right.
Five, six, so.
So I need to write a, so I do, okay, so I do need to write a capital reserve fund for radio replacements.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, one for the first year replacement, giving them permission to purchase the cars, police cars, uh, one for the ambulance.
Well, you don't need one for the cars, do you?
Well, I, I think, it's, I think it still needs to be a vote, but obviously it's gonna be
Has to be voted, but.
No ta- what's gonna say, no ta- no additional tax levying money in the Police General Fund budget.
Right. Right, it's a multi-year contract, um, so you have to give voters the notice and you have to, you know, explain to them. Dawson Street's a new.
I mean, is this something legal we have to do? I think it's just gonna cause more, um, confusion at the, at the ballot.
I will ask the DRA.
I mean, if, if, if this is already in his budget, then this is just gonna cause
Mm-hmm.
people, I mean, I'd, I'd check, for me, I'd check it out.
Yeah, no. Uh, for dump trucks.
Um, did you get the ambulance purchase?
Yeah, that needs.
Yeah, he's, well, he did talk, he did mention it.
Yeah, yes, yes, I would have to put that in there because it would talk about raising a certain amount, uh, transferring a certain amount and utilizing one thirty five. In other words, we'd almost, in the warrant article, ask for, um, the vote permission to remove the money from the, although the way that warrant article was set up, you can do it. Uh, it was set up that the only way money could have, should have come out of that capital reserve fund is if you voted each and every time you wanted money to come out of that fund.
So how did the money come out of the fund then?
Just, he tran- from the last six to seven years, they've just been transferring and internally. Kind of interesting.
So it's just requesting permission to do so, is that, is that what we're doing for the ambulance?
Essentially, yes.
And then are we reducing that to thirty thousand, is that what, that was Andy's recommendation?
Right.
I think we should go, I, I thought twenty was generous.
I was going with the thirty K because it, it led up to the four oh four, three hundred.
Right.
That's the marine in them.
Hmm?
That's the, the marine.
No marine, yeah.
It's an army.
Army, yeah, army. My, my bad, I'm sorry.
As long as we're still talking.
Okay, um, yeah, okay, so then we have the sixty for the Dawson that's already on there, right?
Yep, yep.
Um.
Good catch.
And.
What about the dump trucks?
Yeah, that needs to be on there, but obviously it needs to be worded in a way that it's gonna be X amount a year contract beginning in twenty twenty three.
Mm-hmm.
And that he's buying, he's ordering them this year.
Right.
Or soon, whatever.
As I say, I went through that in my previous life where I knew I wasn't gonna get them for a full year.
Right.
So, it said, you know, tax impact. Zero.
I just, I just think somehow we, I mean, I know he explained it, that it costs more money in the long run, but that is just a huge, huge nut to crack.
I don't, and then, and then, I mean, God bless him, he, he does the best he can, but.
Oh, I, no, I agree.
Now, we're, we're buying four new trucks all at once again.
Right.
And.
No.
It's just, I just, I just, for me, I mean, I, I think we should just, I mean, I don't, I know that if he doesn't have the tools to do the job, or, or any department head, if they don't have the tools to do the job, they're not gonna be able to get the job done, period, but, but I, I think we should try to do like a truck every two years or something, that'll help.
Right, but, but now the issue is, is that the last time when they bought these current trucks, they bought one, and then they bought three. If I remember correctly from the notes that he provided this last meeting, they bought one in what, two thousand twelve?
Yep.
And then the next three in two thousand sixteen or seventeen.
Fifteen.
So it, it doesn't put us on the path to stagger things on a little bit and not have such a, such a large amount of money to come up with all at once.
Right.
And I understand, like, like he stood there and told us, it will cost more money in the long run, but Jesus, ninety grand a year is an awful lot of money, in my opinion, you know?
I mean, that's the thing, I, I was faced with the same dilemma before, I had, I had a Mack that was twenty six years old, I had a Mack that was twenty seven years old, and I had three Internationals in the fleet that were, um, anywhere from twelve to sixteen years of age. So they were all out there.
I think for.
So we did one Mack, one year, and then skipped a year, we did something else in the fleet, it isn't like we totally skipped a year, I wouldn't be mislead anyone, and then we did a Mack, something else, then we did a Mack, so by the time I left, all five were, four of them were in the garage, newer, and the fifth one was on this way.
I think, I think honestly, we should, we should just do two trucks, and then.
But the problem is, is these trucks now.
I know, well, you take, you take the worst two trucks now.
All of them are the worst trucks, that's the problem.
They got them all in the same year, they have the same problems.
And they're all, and, and they're all, they're, they're all at a warranty now.
No, I know, I mean, his, his maintenance budget's gone up to fifty thousand, it was twenty.
But, so the good thing about come twenty twenty three is that maintenance budget should be able to drop back down. Real, realistically, it should be able to come back down because he's not gonna be trying to maintain these older trucks, which again, it all goes back to things that should have been done in the past that we can't do anything about now.
Right.
But we're going, we're, we're following the same trait.
I know, but you ha- unfortunately, because we were, we got one in two thousand twelve and the other three in the same year, we don't have a choice now, realistically.
No, I mean, I, I thi- I, I think we do, but, I mean, I think if.
Well, there's an increase for the maintenance, it'll cover, you know, two or three of them and you just start.
I think, I mean, cause you gotta realize, you know, all, if this stuff passes,
cycling them through.
it's gonna be a huge burden on the taxpayer and that's why I think we should really.
Well, then, then we need, then, the thing is.
Well, to pass the fence on that, you have a seventy four thousand dollar payment, you're gonna be only picking up an, you'll lose the seventy four, you'll pick up a ninety. A difference of ten thousand dollars a year, which is, uh.
Seventy four, eighty four, so almost twenty thousand.
It'll be, yeah, but it'll be a nickel on the tax rate. The difference in the payment.
If this, if, alright, so my opinion, if this is something that we wanna really look into, only getting two this year, or not this year, but yeah, ordering two this year, or ordering three and not four, then we need to have the DPW director in here and talk about this and see if, A, if it's feasible, one, or A, if it's feasible, and two, which ones he could do without, if he could survive with two old and two new, or three and one. Something like that.
And the tough part is, for him is to predict, I won't speak for him, but if these new trucks are fourteen months down the road.
Right.
Who knows what's gonna happen in the next fourteen months?
Right. Believe me, I don't wanna see four brand new trucks.
He's gotta make it through this winter and next winter before those trucks will arrive.
Yep.
Even if we're, you know, when they get approved in March.
Uh, Madam Chair, um, could, could, Karen?
Yes.
Can I just ask a question? Is it possible to order two new trucks and buy two used trucks that are newer?
Well, Karen, that's a ve- that's a very good, that's a very good point, unfortunately, uh, being, being in the DPW world and Matt knows too, he's out there and of course, Chris, there is no, there is no good used trucks. There really isn't. So, I mean, cause we're, we're kinda looking for them too, so.
If you wanna interesting picture in your mind, if you go down one twenty five to Liberty Truck Sales, right in the corner of one twenty five Pierce Road, there's a beautiful new truck there and you.
It's, it's an old.
You ought to see the dump body on it.
Yeah, it's an old derm, it's an old derm, um, plow truck. Yeah, it's an old derm, it's an old derm, um, plow truck, the thing looks like it's been sitting in the ocean.
Yeah, it's, it's.
That's the used stuff that's out there right now, so we'll just get somebody else's headaches, you know, but I do like your.
Do come with the warranty, I think these had seven years or something warranty, so that does kinda, you pay for that too. Especially if they're not good trucks.
But you're looking, you're looking at, um, I mean, the trucks he's, he's asking for, I know, I, I've, I've driven them, they're goo- they're nice trucks. They're a lot better than the, you know, they've come a long ways, they have Cummins motors and they're not, you know, the old Detroit's, but, um, it's just like Matt, and it's just a big pill to swallow, um, but, I don't know. I mean, a, a truck, a truck of this caliber should really honest last fifteen years, fifteen years. That's what they, that's the life expectancy out of a truck this, like this, and we're at, we got, these are three fifteen, so they're now seven years old.
We've got half the life on them.
And they, yeah, uh, so. Nothing, it's not his fault, I'm not blaming it on Pat, it's just the error of these trucks, they were all junk. They had, you know, so, the depth systems in them.
Well, it wasn't even the truck itself, it was just the motor, it's a junk motor.
I do know that with that Volkswagen penalty that they had to pay, there was a grant out there through, um, D E S, you could repair, you could replace each motor. Um, they would make whoever takes the motor out, drill through it, the casing, so that, but the last I priced it out, it was like forty to fifty thousand per truck. The state would pay some of it, um, I think in the end, we were left with like a bill of like thirty thousand for each truck. That would be about the only thing, Karen, that would bridge us over, is if you could get, order two new ones and get two engine jobs on the other two during the summer, since you had them in the fall, fall slash winter. That would be about the only interesting thing that you could do.
And I do know the Budget Committee is questioning this too, so it might, it might be good to have Pat come in again and have this discussion.
Warrant article, you guys still gotta approve the vote on, on the twenty-seventh, and, uh, yeah, we'll ask him in for the twenty-seventh.
That'll be an interesting meeting.
I mean, Pat, at the end of the day, he'll do anything that, he always, of course, puts the situation back in our lap, and, um.
Well, we all want to do the right thing.
No, I do, I mean, if, yeah, I mean.
Happens, we're gonna have to deal with the consequence one way or the other, so, maybe they'll be fine, and we'll have four great trucks for fifteen years. But we don't know.
True.
If we can get them.
Okay.
Okay. So we've got the trucks now.
Alright.
So are you all set with converting?
I'm all set, I have my marching direction, thank you.
Great. Okay. Moving on, right? Okay, determination of date and time for the deliberative session.
Yeah, again, after I put this together, um, asking you to set the meeting for us at February fifth, twenty-two at nine AM, um, knowing that the school typically takes forty-five minutes to max hour and fifteen to an hour and a half, um, that we could set the town's session for ten thirty in the morning.
You're pushing it. I know you've been the moderator for a long time, but jeez, I think.
I'm just gonna rule you out of order, make you be quiet, and then move on.
Please do.
Yeah, please do. I just think that, uh, ten thirty is.
Well, we can go at eleven.
You know best, but, like I said, I mean, I just think, god, if I remember right, the school unfortunately takes a little bit.
Yeah, I, I'd set it at ten thirty, but, and if it goes to eleven, so be it, versus setting it at eleven
Right.
and having it, having the school end short, and.
We wait around.
The ten, yeah, we wait around, and the ten people that wanna show up and hear the town portion of it aren't there to hear it.
Right.
You know?
You're pushing it on the ten people.
But we had, we had a good turnout last year.
That's right, we should have another good one this time.
I have heard from the, uh, Budget Committee that they, the, uh, the school's budget was set even below last year's default, so you're right, it, it could take some time, I wouldn't be surprised that there'd be motions from the floor to add money back in.
Yeah, I wouldn't be surprised either.
Alright, go ten thirty, I'm fine with that.
Okay. Uh, do you wanna? What, do you wanna read the motion?
Oh.
So ahead of meeting.
I'll motion to set the first session of town meeting for February fifth, twenty twenty-two at ten thirty AM to be held at the new High Cafeteria.
Motion so stated.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, moving on to, uh, item five, review of John Morton request to recover expenses to his driveway culvert.
Residents came forward, Ian, Mr. Morton, he lives up on Newt Road, um, he has expenses that he, uh, paid out of pocket this year. Uh, you'll see ones for PIP rental, uh, December eleventh, uh, twenty twenty-one, renting a piece of equipment, um, he's got, uh, pipe that he paid for, four hundred and one dollars, uh, aggregate that he paid for, I'm seeing ninety-six dollars, um, some total, he's out probably four or five hundred dollars. He had a discussion with Pat, it was about the culvert getting replaced. Um, his complaint to the, um, when I first sat down with him, is that the culvert got installed improperly, didn't have enough bedding over, under it or over the top, and therefore, um, failed, and he's asking for the town to, uh, recoup or pay him for a portion of all of his expenses, I ran it back to Pat. Um, Pat pointed out that, uh, one, the state RSA, under two thirty-six, colon thirteen, number s- four, uh, owners to the property to which the access is impertinent shall have continuing responsibility for the adequacy of the access, any grades, culverts, or other structures pertaining to such access, whether or not located within the public right of way. Um, Pat said, you know, I replaced the culvert once already, um, to this, then I realized that when he said he replaced it once already, it was fifteen years ago that he replaced said culvert, and that, um, and then, um, what has been told to me since then is that, uh, the gentleman, uh, works for a tree company, and he regularly brings in, um, over the culvert into his yard for, for cutting up, uh, wood, trees that, uh, the tree company has removed, that they're not interested in, um, so he's given it a pretty, he's giving the pretty, the culvert a pretty good workout on a regular basis, I guess would be the summation of that. Uh, I told him, I couldn't, I promised him anything, uh, state policy is that we shouldn't pay or don't pay, but, uh, at the same time, he requested that I bring it forward, and that's what I'm doing.
So. So, I just wanna get, make this, get this figured out here, so is the town, is the town at all responsible for driveway culverts?
No.
No?
No.
I mean.
Pursuant to the state RSA, we are not.
Well, I know, I know, I know, I just use parenting as I worked there, we, we, we don't, we, we don't deal with driveway culverts, um, it's the homeowner's responsibility. Um, but has a precedence been set on driveway culverts?
If it had occurred last week, I'd say, yeah, like fifteen years ago.
And so his driveway culvert just failed, and he had to.
Failed over the last couple of seasons, yeah, since it's been causing drainage problems on the road. And he couldn't tolerate it anymore, he asked Pat to redo it, and Pat said, no, it was his responsibility, and so he took it on mon- on, on himself this fall, i.e. December, to do it himself. He's approaching us that we should re- reimburse him.
Unfortunately, um, well, first of all, it's against a lot of used taxpayers' r- r- money to, to repair.
Mm-hmm.
Um.
Private property.
Yeah, so.
I think the RSA states it, it's his responsibility.
Yeah.
It's unfortunate, but that's the way it is, so.
Yeah. Yeah, unfor- yeah, unfortunately, driveway culverts, you know, um, they do, I mean, homeowners, th- there is some care there, you know, getting leaves out, and, I'm not saying whatever happened there happened, but there is an amount of, you know, care that a homeowner has to take in driveway culverts, um. You know, so keeping them clean, and keeping the ditch line, you know, around them clean, and fixing the headers, if rocks fall down, is there, it's on them, so unfortunately, you know, I, I apologize, but for, for me, I c- I, I can't, so. It's just by law anyways.
Yeah, I would concur, just doing my job, bringing it forward, and the parts to the ready, told him I would.
Yes, I mean, we stopped plowing Bowlin Road a couple, few years, five years ago.
Mm-hmm.
There's a reason why we stopped plowing Bowlin Road, so, uh, this is, this, it's just a.
Okay.
You know, just can't do it, so.
Okay.
I would concur.
Alright, they're good, moving on to old business, cemetery trustee positions, do we have any interest?
We had zero interest. It's in a big red banner across the town's website, um, I believe it made it through Facebook's trickle. Uh, nobody responded. At this point, what I would advise the board is, uh, as John has pointed out, you can become, uh, cemetery trustees, uh, almost self-appointed, um, and that, uh, you know, there again, this is a possible warrant article, uh, to, um, ask the board to as- assume the responsibility of the trustees, which I think, you know, in paraphrasing what John's request was way back in December sixth, um, was that, okay, A, he doesn't have anyone uh, present to rely on, B, the board could step up and become the cemetery trustees. If, if John were to totally step away from the position where there was no one to do it, by law, you are the trustees technically, because you have to provide, uh, cemeteries within the community and then maintain them.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, so it, it's almost like a foregone conclusion that you are the trustees, uh, for the short term, I would suggest that you get sworn in as trustees, self-appointed, uh, and that we put a warrant article on dissolving the cemetery trustees as of March vote, uh, it would only take effect ninety days after the vote, sorry, to be clear, um, but then the s- you, the selectmen would be in charge of the day-to-day operations, it would also then allow you to assign maintenance or operations to staff that we have and/or hire out a sexton to, um, meet with people who have people, uh, who wanna buy, uh, cemetery plots, um, would then, um, show them what's available, uh, arrange for internments, things of that nature, that's what a sexton would do. My concern right now is that if you all three become, uh, sectons, or, uh, cemetery trustees, um, don't be surprised when the phone rings, you've got something else to do.
So when we conduct business as the trustees of the cemetery, would that be during the Board of Selectmen meeting, or is this a separate meeting? How do we handle that? Is that something that's public?
Done as separate meetings, public can attend, I would ask that you just literally incorporate him as part of this meeting. For instance, if you wanna approve his cemetery trustees, a deed for somebody, uh, if you wanna, you know, approve an internment, uh, you could do it, you know, um.
And if something can't wait until the two-week window of our meetings, we'd have to probably meet?
Yeah, you could.
Just trying to figure out when the.
Yeah, no, we could have a five-minute meeting, you know, some, literally, um, based for religious reasons, somebody needs to be interred more quickly, and, yeah, you could meet. But I, I don't have any, I, I just making you aware that, don't be surprised, you immediately have other duties.
I mean, I'm willing to, the thing is, I can't meet during the day, I know that the trustees meet during the day.
Right, they, they typically have, right.
But, so I, I cannot meet during the day, well, much before three, I mean, I am willing to step up to the plate and, and help out. Um, I don't know if my wife was watching this right now, she'd be jumping through the phone, but anyways, I'm willing to help out, but, um, I mean, this definitely has to be a warrant article.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and, I mean, you know, I think it's our obligation that we keep, keep the the business going in the, in the.
Yep.
Cemetery world, um.
Right, but like he said, we can also appoint a sexton down the road.
But yeah, I mean, after the warrant article passes.
Right, I mean, ninety days.
Oh, yeah, yeah, most definitely.
So I mean, we, so if it passes, we'd have ninety days of having to conduct cemetery trustees business.
Well, well, and if, well, for myself, if I step up, how many does he have already, how many does he need to keep, to get a quorum?
Right now, it's he, himself, and I, so, he's the quorum.
Well, uh, him and myself isn't gonna do it, I mean, they normally have, what, five?
Right.
So.
So you need three.
So.
No, but if there's no trustees, it automatically falls on us even before the vote.
Three of you, so technically, three trustees.
So we're the tru- we technically are the trustees of the cemetery.
He had more than just himself.
No, it's just him.
No, they all resign.
Okay, so, I mean, I guess.
So, so technically, right now, we are the trustees of the cemeteries, and come March, if the warrant passes, then we can, ninety days later, we can appoint a sexton.
Alright.
So we have from now until, what is it, uh?
Six months.
Yeah, six months from now.
Yep.
So June, we can appoint a sexton, if we so desire, if we don't get any volunteers for this.
Yeah, no, I, I just thought he had more than himself, the poor guy, you know, so.
Just him.
I was just gonna try to help out, I didn't know if they were down one, one trustee, I, I would have stepped up to the plate, I guess I'm stepping up anyway, so.
You don't have a choice.
Yeah, exactly, you don't have a choice.
Alright.
You're not alone though, don't worry.
Yeah, we're all in this together, Andy.
I appreciate it.
Okay.
Alright, moving on.
Just don't call me.
Well, you'll get the call.
Yeah, I know, I, I already know that.
Calls.
Yeah.
Um, okay, next item.
Article, alright.
Yes, affinity lighting, possible warrant article, I know you had mentioned that a few meetings ago about that.
Um, right, at the time, we were unsure where we were gonna end up fiscally at the end of the year. Um, just to recap, affinity lighting has approached the town to, um, replace out somewhere between eighty and a hundred and seven, uh, ever-source light fixtures. Um, the cumulative savings over ten years would be the eighty-two thousand, um, we would reduce our electrical bill, uh, s- they're saying sixty-nine point seven percent from the cur- town's current consumption of electricity with a payback period of three point four, five years. Um, so the LED conversion cost w- is. The cost of conversion is thirty-eight thousand eight fifty-eight, we are expecting a rebate. We are expecting a rebate from EverSource, what they consider an energy efficiency incentive that would pay back ten thousand five fifty. So similar to how the road article is written, I would propose that we write an article to do this. Uh, to raise and appropriate thirty-eight thousand eight fifty-eight ninety-four with approximately ten thousand five fifty. Um. And then, um, a- as a warrant article, let the voters approve it up or down. Um, then it gets the question, do we take the, uh, if you would concur with the warrant article, do we take the thirty-eight or the difference of approximately twenty-eight thousand, is it an unassigned fund balance, uh, or is it a, um, ask the voters to approve?
Well, I think it would be, we'd have a better chance of using the, uh, unassigned fund balance, for one, cause it's already been taxed. And and for two, th- there's a, I mean, for this, I mean, this, there's a huge educational, uh, segment that comes along with this because, I mean, I think it's a great, I think it's a great thing to do. I mean, we're probably paying for streetlights that's not even ours.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Um, I mean, I can't really, I I can't say that at a hundred percent, but there's a very good possibility. Cause when I worked for the state and you worked for the town of Hampton, we were paying for lights that weren't ours.
Yeah.
And it's probably, this, there's probably somewhere here in Milton that we are.
Yeah.
Uh, unfortunately, so I think for the bang for our buck, I think it's just, that's a no-brainer, but.
And and where you're gonna see the real savings of this, if you do do it out of the, um. Let's say the unassigned fund imbalance. Gets approved in March, I believe the fixtures would be installed by the end of the year. You'd actually be carrying into twenty-three a lower electrical usage line.
Mm-hmm, cause we we, right now.
So they immediately see that right back.
Cause right now, uh, we're we're putting in, um. How much are we putting in that, our line to pay the lights for for the traffic, I mean, for the lights on the pole? How m- how much are we, is it fif- fifteen thousand a year?
Yeah, I don't have that right in front of me. Yeah, it's it's something like that, yeah, it's 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 a fairly.
I wanna say it's like fif- it's pretty, pretty significant amount of money.
Right. So I mean, it could, it'll drop to half, it'll drop to less than seven grand.
Yeah. I mean, like over a couple of years, these things just pay for themselves and, I mean, I did it at my own home.
Right, right.
Changed all my lights to LED and I save a ton of money, so, just in my own home, so.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
I I know there is a cost savings, so.
So, have they done the study?
No, all they got was they called EverSource, they got what's known as our, um. Got a warrant.
A register?
Yeah, basically, a tally, a register of the number of lights, and that's how they based it.
Yeah.
That's why I say, public service, EverSource has us down as having a hundred and seven.
Hmm.
I know we claimed that based upon a prior audit, we should only have about seventy-nine or eighty.
Hmm.
So we've got twenty-seven that are already questioned.
So seventy-nine or eighty that are turned on, right now, still running right now?
Yeah. Exactly, they're on our tariff, that's the word.
Tariff, okay, so.
They are on our tariff, we are paying for them.
So after they conduct this study and they find, so EverSource says is a hundred and seven, they find that there's only eighty that the town actually is responsible for and should be paying for. But as they're driving around, they find a lot of the streetlights that were turned off and where the the, where there should be a streetlight at some of the major intersections, those can be added on if we wanna put streetlights there, correct?
Yes, you can, right.
Okay.
Right.
Cause I'm sure there's a lot of people out in West Milton or wherever that wish there was a streetlight at their intersection that they might or might not have.
It'd probably be more platable for us to install it at only half of its annual operating cost than than what they they would've been.
Right.
Right.
Okay, I I I just wanted to ask that question, cause.
And and if they only find the eighty that you think that is out there, the cost, the thirty-eight thousand dollar cost contract drops.
Comes down. So that thirty-eight thousand's based off a hundred and seven?
Exactly, it's still only three sixty-three seventeen per fixture, period. So, that was what I, we found, like, for instance, on ours, twelve of them got transferred to the state's tariff. The ones on the end of High Street, right along the beach, we were never supposed to pay for those. So those instantly got taken off of our bill. And not even for three sixty-three, they just paperwork changed, done. Um, five driveways that we were paying for, no, that goes on to the homeowners. Two of them in North Hampton went back to the homeowner. So there was a number of them that got changed out for zero dollars.
Mm-hmm.
Which, you know, we don't, we're not paying, that's just part of the process. So, if the n- fixture count drops, so does this contract.
Okay.
Contract would be a not to exceed thirty-eight eight fifty-eight ninety-four.
Yeah, I mean, I guess.
Warrant article?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
For me, yeah.
That's all we need.
Yeah, it's no-brainer.
Okay, excellent.
Okay.
Moving on, other business that may come before the board.
Uh, so I got an email, I don't know if, Chris, I know you got it.
Yep.
I don't know if either of you got it, um, but Jacob Lewis. I don't know who he works for, uh, but anyway, so he sent me an email asking if, um, we were interested in selling the lease of the cell tower off of the, in the, out in the back of the industrial park. Chris got the email, what, uh, a month ago?
Early in December, yeah.
Yeah, I just got it today.
I didn't know if it was spam or.
I didn't either, that's why I checked the view.
Some of those I'm really hesitant of of opening, thinking I'm gonna buy, I'm gonna buy the farm.
Right. So I don't know if.
I mean, what benefit?
Eh, yeah, and that's the thing, so my, what I was gonna recommend was, we have Chris reach out to this gentleman and find out what the pros and cons are of, I mean, I can't imagine selling the lease would be too uh, not profitable, but too, um.
It's gonna be profitable to him to buy them.
It's gonna, it'd be profitable for him to buy it.
Right.
But, do we wanna have Chris reach out to this guy and ask him what the, what, uh?
What's the scheme?
Exactly, or do we wanna just say, yeah, don't worry about it, no big deal, doesn't really matter, cause we're probably not gonna make out at all in the end.
I mean, I guess it doesn't hurt to look into it, I mean.
And ask a couple of questions?
Yeah, I mean.
I know when Steve had his, um, he got these calls on an annual basis, um. Initially, his reaction was no, because he was, he liked the cha-ching in his pocket every single month. It was, you know, it was a guaranteed check, it was there. It's better than social security. But, uh, when, you know, he decided to part ways with the property, it was, it was a different dec- decision. You know, um, if we were a business that, let's say, we owned ten of these and all of a sudden we wanted to take our money and turn it into some other profitable project, build a road, pay off a piece of equipment.
Buy a building.
Buy a building. It may be our inducement to to trade in or or sell these long-term leases.
Hmm.
I'm not sure we're that, in that need. But, Isaac, um, I'll pick up the phone, call him, there's no, nothing ventured, nothing gained.
Maybe com- maybe compare what we get paid every month versus what he wants to pay for the lease.
He's gonna have to give me something that's gonna show that it's gonna, or give us something to show there's there's a a reason or a need to do this.
Exactly.
Okay.
And then, and then, you know, maybe run it by, if it goes any further, we'll have to run it by attorney.
Oh, definitely, we'll have to run it by attorney, cause we're gonna sever a a long-term legal. I mean, it's, the same question's probably gonna come up every single year in the future with a replace, with respect to the solar fields. I see the same thing happening there. And then just, do, do you wanna give up the, um. The residual for the, for a one-time payout, basically.
Right.
I mean, early on, it was put down that, you know, I I can remember with Steve, oh, no, that that tower's maxed out, there's only four arrays on there. Yeah, I guess what, now there's twenty on each one, and we we get a, one, we get the tax revenue from the number of arrays. But we also get the revenue from the pole itself.
Mm-hmm.
Not to say that we wouldn't in the future also turn it up, and maybe that's part of the analysis. If he privately owns the pole, we're gonna start taxing the pole, him for the pole, the tower, the maintenance, the yard.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
Right, which I.
So there's, you know.
I mean, it doesn't hurt to to pick up the phone and call him, in in my opinion, anyways, but there's three of us.
Yep. Yep. But, yeah.
Okay, no, that's fine.
Sure, yeah, that's fine.
Okay. Uh, I do have one more as well, um, so. Now that it's getting cold out, I've been getting people calling me, asking me when the beach gates are gonna be open for the ice. Um, I spoke to Karen on my way here tonight, and if the rest of the board is okay with this, she's all right with opening the gates in the morning. Obviously minus a lot of snow where the gates can't be closed, but opening them in the morning, closing them when she leaves. And then opening them Friday morning and then closing them Sunday afternoon, so that way they're open all weekend for people to go out on the ice. Not really my cup of tea to go on the ice right now, a little too thin for me, but some people wanna get out there now and go ice fishing.
Someone will be fishing on Saturday.
I saw, yeah, I saw somebody Sunday.
Yeah, I know.
So.
Pulled down my road and the guy's.
Still there on the ice, too.
Yeah.
So do we want to, uh? Do we have to make a motion for that or just give the okay to do that?
Either it's more of an operational.
Let me just ask the, let me just ask one question, um, because, well, I know that we we always do this, but, so we're for me, the ice isn't safe, I don't think it is.
I think I know where you're going with this.
Do we have a liability for?
Yes, I'm looking up, I'm just looking up for the taxpayers, that's my job.
An attractive nuisance, Steve. I I I could call.
According to, and I, so. According to Karen, the only liability that the town faces is keeping that parking lot plowed and sanded. Once they get on the ice, it's no longer town business, it's it's obviously waterways, so it's states.
Mm-hmm.
Um.
No, you're.
But again, you gotta use common sense. That's my opinion, if you're gonna go on the ice.
I mean, they, people can get on the water anyways, I I just was throwing that out there and you're one hundred to ten percent right, Matt.
Exactly.
Our only liability now, it jogged, jogged upstairs, that we have to keep the parking lot, um, so it's safe, that's it.
Yeah, we just gotta keep it plowed and sanded.
Only thing I would like is to ask the chief his opinion before we do it, cause I know it could be, could be an attractive nuisance all night long. I mean, I know that's why we don't, it's come up as beach commissioners before, why wouldn't we leave it up, like, for instance, all summer long? And it's because it's an attractive nuisance at night, people.
But, the thing is, when we get a lot of snow.
When there's, when there's ice, they can get there and.
Right, but when we get a lot of snow, the gates stay open twenty-four seven.
Yeah.
Yeah, true.
So, I mean, yeah, I, you know, reach out to the chief, whatever, he's probably gonna say.
As a courtesy, I just.
If, yeah, if I had to guess, he'd probably say that people need to use common sense, but I I'm not gonna speak for him, obviously.
Hmm, so. I mean, we can make the motion, um, upon the chief's request, um, so we don't have to wait till another two weeks. Um, you know, I mean, I'll make a motion to open up the gates and upon the chief's, uh, just, you know, his opinion.
Have Karen, uh, I would, I would have the motion state, Karen opens them morning and night, Monday through Thursday. Opens them in the morning, closes them at night when she leaves, Monday through Thursday, opens them Friday, closes them Sunday afternoon. So I would do that, that that was her recommendation.
There you go. Okay, then that's the motion, and I'll second it.
All all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Per the chief's response, I guess we should say.
Yep.
Yes. Did you have any other information about the other building? Or what what what's rolling around with this building?
The last, it was, the email chain back and forth was, you wanted to know what the operational costs were, electrical and heat. I haven't gotten a response back on that yet.
Okay.
And at the same time, I have have asked counsel to draw up the purchase and sales slash lease agreement. Um. It does not need to go through, let's say, a town warrant article process, because, one, we already own the the land underneath the Head Start building. Uh, and, uh, so it would just be an agreement between the parties for us to assume the improvements. And under the state statutes, you would already pre-adopted, uh, the state RSA that allows you acquire at any time to benefit the town property. So.
So, now back, so still being on town-owned properties. Let's deal with all of our town-owned properties that should be going out for auction years ago.
Are we talking about the Head Start or all the other properties?
All the other properties, obviously not the Head Start, I was just, we were on the topic of land and buildings.
Right. Yeah, okay, sorry.
So like, um, Sleeping Bear, um.
Sleeping Bear, Utah Way, Fifteen Quarter Street, uh, all those, I'm looking mentally for, um, late May, early June. What I have to do now is send letters to, certified letters to all the prior owners, are you interested in getting back in their heirs? If, for instance, somebody has died, I have to track all those people down. So like, when it came to the one on Gold Street, I had to track somebody down in Yuma, California. And she finally got back to me that her husband had even deceased, the person that I sent the letter to, and no, they were still not interested in. And I got a nice handwritten note back from her. So that's the level of effort it takes for me to clear each one of those to put them on the auction. Is cause the court has said, not only is it thirty days, but it's, or sorry, three years that you have an obligation to buy the property back, but it pretty much goes on to a lifetime. So that properties, let's say, we've owned a property for ten years and it doubles value, and let's say we only owed at one time eight or nine thousand, and the property sells for twelve. We owe three back to the prior owner. And the attorney's like, you know, you need to keep some of that money in escrow, unless you've got unlimited reserves, cause you may, if they come out of the woodwork, have to pay them back for that. So that's what the court made, the Supreme Court made that decision in twenty-twenty. And that extended, um. The notification process, cause it used to be three years, you didn't redeem it, we're selling it.
Hmm.
That's not what the judge said. The judge said that goes on almost indefinitely, as long as they're alive or you can find them. And when I did the first time, I went through and said, for instance, Robert Breton on the the Governor's Road one. Um, she said, no, you, and and I checked with, okay, the attorney. Hey, I I tried out, I sent it to, cause the law says you send it to previous address. Previous address is where he's not living. So I sent it, of course, I gotta return envelope to two fifty-four Governor's Road. Nope, not good enough, the attorney said. So worked with the chief, got three addresses for a possible Robert Breton. Three different addresses in southern New Hampshire, Rochester area, sent out three certified letters, got zero responses. Attorney said, that's a reasonable effort, you're done, now you can sell it. So imagine having to do that for every single piece of property.
I just think.
Like on the Utah Way one, I know we have those people are still here in in this community, so.
I just think that decision, I mean, in in, I just think that's so unfair to the tax, to all the taxpayers, you know, it's just.
It just, it just lengthens the time, that's all, it's not as easy.
So so now what we're gonna have to do is, the minute it hits that three-year mark that the town is, has owned that property, we're gonna have to start immediately, not let these drag out any longer.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
Right.
Well, part of that is keeping the proper records, which will, like, to be unnecessary to do that.
Right. Oh, absolutely, yeah.
Yeah.
Yes, that that too, right.
Yeah, and and you have an a pre-existing list, right, cause I remember you worked on that.
Oh, yeah, I do, I have, yeah.
So it's something that at least we can start, maybe there's some easier ones to start off with.
Yeah.
Since, you know, the budget's done and all these other things that we, more or less, right?
Yeah.
We'll be rolling into a new year.
Well, it's like, like, you know, I got thinking about it today, it's okay, so, once the budget's done and then the warrants are done, then it's, uh. Voters, putting together your packets for February fifth, the voter's guide. Uh, I still have to run all the warrant articles by the DRA and the town attorney, at least the the newer ones. Um, and as soon as, so let's see, voter's guide, uh, I'm having surgery on January twenty-seventh, I won't be here for a couple of days. Uh.
Put that down.
Um, let's see, what else? Uh, yeah, so, yes, as we got more towards spring, you're right, visit. Once things are set, the warrant articles are set, and the the ballots are written, you're in a holding pattern there for about a three to four week period of time until you get the election on the eighth.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Oh, the annual report, forgot about the annual report, let's do that, do it in February eleventh.
Yeah. So that leads me to my, I sent an email.
Yeah, goals.
I would, well, I think we have a little confusion, because I know we did a goals.
Mm-hmm.
As, uh, with the town residents that were here, and ourselves, and anybody at department heads.
Yeah.
But there was also recommendations from the Efficiency Task Force that was provided, and you and I were going to be working on some of that too,
Right.
and seeing how we can, um, you know, accomplish them, or find individuals, uh, that can accomplish those.
Right.
Because that was based on a survey completed by the 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 residents. So that, that's a little bit different, and so that's why I wanted to make sure if we could set some time.
Mm-hmm.
Sure.
Aside your busy schedule.
Yeah.
To do that.
I thought you meant also on this, this particular two, because it's beyond.
Well, I mean, some of them coincide.
Yeah.
Um, but, yeah, but that one was the one in particular that I was requesting for.
Good. Hmm, you know, I think it's very important.
And I don't mind, I'm sorry, yep.
Well, I just don't want that that whole thing just to fall through the cracks, because there's a lot of work.
Right, 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 well, and. Yeah.
Um, and I know you're not learning it, Chris, I just, but, no, I'm just.
Well, and there was a lot happening in the fall, so, you know, but.
Yeah.
That's why I know that there's gonna be this.
Yeah.
O- opportunity of some time, and I would like to be able to, you know, work on that and, um, do what I can on my part, and see what we can do with getting other department heads involved as well.
Okay. Would you want me to put it back on the agenda for the first meeting in February?
Sure, but I would like to be able to meet with you about that as well, yeah, and we could put that on the agenda to to review what we discussed.
Oh, yeah, before. Okay. Okay.
Sure. Haven't forgotten Karen. I swear I haven't. Okay, so, moving on. Approve of minutes, public minutes for December twentieth, twenty twenty-one.
Yeah, I'm fine with them, I'm ready, you all set, Matt?
I am staying, I wasn't here.
Yeah, he wasn't here.
Oh, you was here, oh, you little naughty boy, okay.
You wanted to be here.
I know.
I did, somebody didn't give me the number.
So I'll make a motion to.
He actually sent it to the other two selectmen.
I was wondering what that phone number was, and then I forgot to even ask.
Yeah, that was classic.
Sorry.
Yeah.
No, it's not.
And then I'm like wondering, is he gonna call?
Yeah, and then if I hadn't silenced my phone, he actually texted in during the meeting.
Yeah.
I'm here, and, uh, yeah.
Sorry.
No, it's fine.
Glad he's chatting about it, he's like old guys in technology, and then he's realizing, wow.
So I'll make a motion to approve the, uh, the minutes for December twentieth as written.
Hang on a second, and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great.
I, we do have, although it's not on the agenda, uh, the minutes of December twenty-ninth, uh, Amy was, uh, a rush order in and got them done, um.
On the twenty-ninth, can I just see them real quick?
Yeah, you you can, yeah, there's three copies if you wanna pass them down.
This is pertaining to the, uh.
Well, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Oh, uh, to.
Yeah, this had to do with the, um, encumbrances meeting.
Encumbrances.
Okay.
Um, where you had Pat Smith, Chief Marie, and Chief Kraus here. The only thing I did add to, um, the minutes is in the under, item number two, Highway Department. Mr. Smith requested a carryover of two hundred hours, I inserted the words of accumulated vacation time. I just wanted it to be more, uh, relevant as to what he was actually to accumulate. It was apparent to those of us in the meeting, but, um, three years from now, um, I don't want it to be known that we somehow gave somebody two hundred hours, it's it's probably up to two, it was two hundred hours over a group of people, it wasn't just one person. And it was for accumulated vacation time.
Okay.
That they weren't able to use, but that was the only, uh, addition, and that's the first time I can honestly say that I've done that. Amy does a great job with these minutes, uh, she never seems to miss a point, uh. The only other thing I ever correct on is if, uh, there's a spelling of somebody's name.
Yeah, I'm fine with these, are you fine?
Yes.
Yeah.
Uh, so I'll make a motion to accept these minutes with the corrections of what Chris just stated.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, for December twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-nine, uh, two thousand twenty-one.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So you gotta just sign one, though, you got the one?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, good.
It's an unstable.
Is the, the other, that's the page that goes with it.
Okay, gotcha.
All right, public comments pertaining to topics previously discussed. And you can pass that on.
Step on up.
Can that be a question, or is it just a comment? You can't interact.
Well, we can interact.
I don't think it's just the one, too, because I, or or the the follow-up would be, I'm curious on the bridges, like, uh, you know, with the Town House Bridge, and you got the funding between Maine and such, and whoever's been doing meeting minutes is amazing, because I read through all of last year's, probably crazy. Um, but is Milton Mills, like, we heard it mentioned in the meeting, you know, that one's down to one lane. Is there, is there a reason or a rhyme, is there a priority to one bridge over the other? Like, we haven't had the Town House Bridge for seven years, five years, and, and, you know, there I, there's not a lot of reason to put something where it hasn't been. Yet you got Milton Mills with one lane, and then you got, what's the other bridge, the one on that wicked turn?
Uh, Hopper Rugged?
Yeah, right, this, yeah, so, those, both those bridges are live, active, being used every day, fire, police. You know, it's it's a service right there, so why do we, yeah, I read something in one of the meetings where someone was here talking about a covered bridge for Town House Bridge. That eliminates, you know, not that I want tractor trailers going by my house, but that eliminates tractor trailers, that eliminates fifth-wheelers going into the campground. So now we're building a specialty bridge for no reason.
It eliminates fire trucks, too.
Fire trucks, yes, and now we're still gonna burn down when it floods, even though when it floods, the rain's gonna stop the fire.
But. So I, so, uh, with, Chris, you probably might know a better answer, but after talking to, hearing Bruce talk about this, the town planner, it it's all on this, like, so like, state bridges from Milton and Maine, or New Hampshire and Maine, I guess.
Yeah.
Those are all on a list that the state has and a priority, I believe.
You said it one hundred percent.
So it's, it's however.
Is it Maine's priority or ours, or is it?
Both.
Both.
Yeah.
Hmm.
And so is Town House higher than Milton Mills?
I think it was.
You can never put that forward?
I think the reason it was higher was because it's not actually functioning anymore, whereas the other ones are still technically functioning.
Mm-hmm.
Which is kind of ridiculous, I understand, but.
Yeah, is it?
Yeah, so the state rates, state DOT has responsibility to rate and inspect all the bridges in the state, irregardless of who owns them, including the town ones. So for instance, like, we actually have ten, like, one of them's on Winding Hill, you'd say, well, there's no bridge, well, a culvert wider, an opening wider than ten feet is a bridge, in their definition.
Considered, yeah, you're experiencing, you're going over that space.
They put together a list, top to bottom.
Yeah.
And, um, they use a program to, uh, address the red-list bridges basically first. And and, um, the fact that the Town House one was an intermunicipal one, and is no longer there, got it up higher actually on the on the list.
Oh, you're gonna make me not sleep.
The number one red-listed bridge in the state is the one between Hampton and Seabrook in Hampton.
Yeah.
And they won't actually start construction on that till twenty-seven.
So there's no way to ever stop the Town House Bridge from coming back, if I'm hearing you right?
Correct.
Yeah.
Well, you you you'd need both, one, both states to cooperate, both borders of selectmen to cooperate, and then there'd be that whole thing about emergency management, and you'd probably get overruled.
Yeah, even though.
Yeah, yeah.
Hmm.
You'd probably get overruled.
Well, since that was so quick, I will just get rid of my last one, is.
Yeah.
You know, you could look in at the, mm, uh, Town House Meeting Building, and it was a hundred thousand dollar fundraiser originally, and now, as mentioned, which I couldn't find, that's one of the reasons I was reading, is we paid for the heat in it, now we paid for the paint job on it. So was there, how, was it, is it our building and we put electricity in it anyways?
It's always been our building.
Always our building, fundraiser was just improvements to it.
Yeah. And a lot of the improvements were funded through what's known as an L-Chip grant. Uh, part of the money that you pay for license plates, and those little logos that go on the back, and whether you have a chickadee or a, you know, in Maine, they have lobsters and chickadees, wildlife plates, and all that, it's all of them.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. All the manly.
Some of that money is funded back through that and is used for preservation, and we put up seed money, John Catwick and his group applied for, and we continually got L-Chip money. So for instance.
Is the committee still together?
No, they've disbanded now that all the improvements are done, that they had planned on, subject system, wiring, insulation, siding, you name it.
It's amazing.
And the last of the money just got expended, there was two thousand in the account, and it got expended through Craig Painting to paint the outside of it. So that money.
Any ideas to get revenue from it?
Correct. He, Mr. Catwick had it, had a lot of things lined up and uses for that building to be rented out.
COVID.
But everything got pushed back and pushed aside and canceled because of COVID.
Okay. Well, I don't wanna keep you guys, but, yeah, thank you, I appreciate those, too.
Yeah. And the agreement with, we have an agreement with Maine, um, Maine DOT and New Hampshire DOT get together, put together an agreement. And then twenty percent of New Hampshire's half falls to New Milton. Twenty percent of Maine's half should have, they have a different funding.
Right, no, I've read all about that, yeah, thank you, but, yeah.
Okay. Yeah, and then so.
I always thought there was a way to stop it, I, you know, I don't really need the the, uh, traffic reports on the campground, I was obviously read through all that back then. You know, my dad and I were sitting at the house, they stayed with me in the summer, and we started counting, and I was like, oh my god, the traffic report was right! Because I almost didn't feel that was true, but once you sit there and really look at it, it's like, yeah, it is, and now all of a sudden we go back to tractor trailers and this, just, you know.
Although I think you'll see.
Maybe I do want.
The road posted on both sides to almost eliminate a tractor trailer.
No more.
Tractor trailer shouldn't really.
Yeah, that's a.
They, when it was a wooden bridge, that's, we had eighteen-wheelers crossing that thing all the time.
Oh, yeah, I watched one of them, wow, I was actually right by it.
Yeah, all the time.
That's scary, I.
Hauling a three-thirty excavator. Wow, watch that.
Yeah. For years, you'd see the trucks still, even though the sign said no more, they'd come down there and they'd have to spin around the campground, because it was a rough, you know.
Wow, yeah, nice.
Well, we can always put a, a one minutes.
Yeah.
Yeah, you could, we could do like, uh, you know, com- commercial trucking through there, things of that nature.
That'd be helpful, yeah, you don't wanna eliminate, I'm.
From our side.
The campground needs to get the revenue, and you need to get people there, so that's different.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, yeah, that's that's different, but.
But it's, yeah, the commercial trucks, it it.
But like, for instance, uh, uh, somebody a quarter mile up the road getting the whole household furniture delivered, instead of being rooted off the backs at seventeen and downtown house, now they need to come off of two oh two and come up through Lebanon's roads. Those are the kind of things that we, that this board can control.
Control some of the traffic.
Right.
Interesting, though, I I didn't realize till tonight that I've always lived a dream that maybe the bridge could be stopped.
Well, we just woke you up.
Yeah, you did, yeah.
Okay, any other comments pertaining to shopping? Nope? Okay, expenditure report, we precede them?
I did ask Brittany to give to you, and I believe Matt had it last, there is an end-of-the-year-to-date report, um, where we had expended about eighty-two percent of our, uh, fiscal twenty-one budget. Um, but she wanted me to point out, multiple times she said, remember to tell the board, it is not a final, it is a working document, because literally, we will be still kept catching up with invoices the whole month of January.
Yeah.
So it is not like the year's closed off, but that was just to give you an idea, leading into tonight's meeting, because you had to make some potential fiscal decisions, where we stood. Um, I will hopefully get from her a more accurate, uh, report. Where, by, definitely by your next meeting, it'll be far more accurate. The other thing is, um, today was the last day to pay property taxes without a penalty, uh, this place was hopping. Uh-huh. Michelle was gonna try and close it off, and she explained to me today, somebody messed it up, they bounced a check. So now she's, she, in other words, she was gonna finalize the report, this is what you got, and that check kind of messed things up for her. Because she's trying to wrap that up, too, so, um, I will let you know by email towards the end of the week what we, uh, have received. I think the TD Bank statements the next three days will be very revealing, back and forward those to you, and you can see how we're, uh, how we're doing.
Pretty good.
Okay, great, thank you.
Good.
All right, town administrator.
So our next meeting is, I know this says the twenty-fourth, but I think it's actually twenty-seven. Let me check my calendar. Because I know the seventeenth is the, uh. No, twenty-fourth, sorry, I keep, why I keep sending twenty-seven?
No, you're, because you're not going to be here the twenty-seventh, Chris.
That's right, I'm gonna be into the, into the drugs.
Okay.
Uh, I just wanted to announce, uh, publicly, uh, the town sold the former tax-dated parcel on Gold Street. Um, I've got it down here. I tried to move to an electronic format. Uh, we sold the parcel on Gold Street, it was just over eighteen thousand with the, um, because parties had to pay the legal fees, uh, eighteen thousand eight hundred and fifty-one dollars, that closed on December twenty-third. We then closed on the Governor's Road parcel that we discussed earlier, uh, that total price was thirty-five thousand nine fifty. Um, I am pleased to report that the new owner actually came in, uh, a day later and pulled a demolition permit with Brian to commence with cleaning up the property, he's, it's actually going to be a house lot for his daughter, so, um, has some real and solid intentions of moving on that very quickly.
Good.
Uh, the fourth thing was, Mr. Slasky up on Jug Hill Road, uh, he applied to the Bureau of Land Land and Tax Appeals, um, they sent both he and us a letter saying, you all need to meet, sit down one-on-one, see if you can resolve your differences. Um, I did speak with Mr. Slasky, um, he cannot attend an evening meeting for medical reasons, um, has a hard time seeing at night. Uh, he's an elderly gentleman, uh, he'd like the board, I'd like the board to suggest times and dates when at least one or two of you could meet with him. I think, uh, I'm not sure what all, the whole background of the issue is, to be honest with you. We may have suggested one a day, and then he wants something else, so. But I didn't know if you, anyone could meet with him middle of the afternoon, or if you wanted to do a Saturday, I'm available for a Saturday. Need me to come take minutes and see what's at the bottom of this one, but we don't often.
I'm gonna try to accommodate him, I mean, um.
Been very polite through the whole process, he was just.
I mean, what's the, what's the latest he can, is, can he, like, is it three o'clock?
I wanna say four o'clock, you know, when it starts, gets dusky.
Huh, so, I mean, I mean, three-thirty's good for me, anytime.
Okay.
And it's up to the board, really, but, um.
Sure, I can do a three-thirty.
Okay.
Sometime.
Well, let me, I'll call him then tomorrow, and let's see what I can work out for a three-thirty. Coming up, okay. Um.
Thanks.
Fifth thing I had on my agenda was to ask you, um, each year we tend to, we have dedicated our annual report to someone who has served the town for a number of years, or someone who served the town has passed away in the last year. Um, I know former selectman Tom Gray's name has been suggested, um, it's open for discussion, are there other people, people? Are there other people, peoples, um, that you'd wanna dedicate the town report to?
No, I'm, I'm definitely fine with dedicating Tom Gray, um, you know, he was a selectman for thirteen years here. I mean, it's uh, you know, it's the most we can do, um.
I agree.
Now, do we, do we, uh, we normally do put one, somebody in the front, and then?
Yeah, sometimes we've done somebody on the front, like, a couple of times we've done, like, uh, for instance, this building we were just talking about, the townhouse restoration as it got going along, and on the inside cover was either John Gilman, Mr. Catwick. Matter of fact, I think the building was on the outside, Mr. Catwick was on the inside, um.
Has anybody else, um, I know this is just very preliminary, but has anybody else come forward? Um, to, cause I mean, I have an idea for, for the back. I mean, I'd like to.
Yeah, for instance, you know, here we had a color picture of the aerial, but on the inside you had three different people, Harold Martin, Betty White, and Andy, Luscher.
Okay.
Um, so, you know, any, it isn't limited just to Tom, um.
Well, and I think also what we've done too is open it up for suggestions from the public and have them available by the next meeting.
Would you want me to put it on Facebook, uh, Facebook, town webpage and?
No.
Sure.
Yeah.
That'd be good.
I just, having never done it myself personally, I just wanted to get, what was your opinion?
Right.
So.
Okay.
Dedication, and so we'll make a final decision next week.
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Twenty-fourth.
Two weeks from now.
No, two weeks from now is the.
Three weeks from now.
Three weeks. Okay. Anything else, Chris?
No.
Selectman comments?
Uh, I'm good.
I just, seriously, I just wanna wish everybody a happy new year, our audience, thanks for coming. But uh, wish everybody a happy new year and a healthy and prosperous and, and uh, hopefully, um, you know, let's just be kind to one another, um, and we'll get through it, but.
And certainly I wanna just remind the um, residents that there's positions open for the upcoming elections. Do we have a deadline date for that, Chris? It's usually the uh, last week of January of some time, so you can certainly come in and see Michelle to register.
Yeah, it was on that letter that I gave you earlier, and it's on my calendar and my, um.
Okay, well, I just wanted to.
Yeah.
Remind people that this is a great opportunity to uh, step up and serve the community.
I believe it's the day at, the day or two days after the holiday, in other words, it's definitely later in the month.
So like the nineteenth?
Yeah, but I, you know, some, I will post that also on the town website.
Yes, perfect.
That was a big banner, um, yeah.
Okay, that's all I have. I guess uh, motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and now we'll be going into non-public.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you guys.
Thank you.